I'll have the entrance from.
Yeah.
Does it have to, does it have to do that? Does it have to have the court?
Stonehouse. I grew up here like. Came back four years ago.
Mr. Jansen, sir.
We were always battered because my parents.
See you.
My cousins.
I know you're doing great.
My mother was seven.
I don't. How's it right?
Yeah, yeah, that was my mother. My grandfather. That was.
The fuck.
I was growing up.
What is that?
That's where you push that button and they send you, spot comes out of there.
Yeah. I have.
Good, how are you?
I have no idea what that is.
How are you?
I'm good.
See you.
See you.
Your neighbor up the street.
You are. Yeah, I used to work with that years ago. Yeah, well. So she was doing stuff with the pool, I was out there.
Okay.
Well, welcome to the board. Thank you, sir. No fireworks there.
Yeah, every time I go to try to pan it some.
They started making.
Unless it's a really, really light.
Yeah.
I always wanted to tell you how nice that house looks.
Well, thank you.
Even the white.
What is this?
Even the garage and stuff you put on.
That's it. Which house is that?
Bottom of your street right up from where I was born. Next house, that little stone house.
Yeah.
There's a garage.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. That's beautiful. Yeah.
I remember that. It was just, even when I was a kid, it was just a part of the stone house and then there was the wooden part.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, well, my great, great aunt had it.
Was that who it was?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, Bert had it. Yeah, it's been, I'm the fifth, this generation has had it.
Okay.
We, we took her down to nothing.
You probably caught some eyes going by there though, aren't you?
Well, I, I tell you what, I'll be, I'll be glad when twenty-four gets here.
Yeah.
Oh, you might, way they're going, it might be a little longer than twenty-four.
We'll retrieve this winter and so.
But aren't they, isn't there a reprieve on the winter? It's the twentieth, isn't it, coming up here?
Or if the weather holds out, it might even go a little bit farther.
I just assume they do and get it done.
This next part of it's gonna go fast because down here seemed like it took forever, but they had all that underground stuff they had.
Yeah.
Which just seemed like they weren't getting anything done.
They were working with a lot, I mean, like.
Imagine everything they had to work around. And one of the guys said it was like just a tangled mess.
Well, around South Street, the trucks don't bother you.
Yeah, I've been that.
Four o'clock in the morning, I go, I get the newspaper and I watch them come by and you can always see the ones that are stopping to keep going through.
Cattle haulers and hog haulers are the worst.
Best thing when you start slopping. And then stop doing. Yeah, somebody goes. Come up here. Here you go.
Yeah, they'll be as low as. With that. I'm not sure they're surprised. I mean, they'd have been just a little gearing. All the way.
They'd have been powered.
Yeah.
But somebody said, you know, like. Trucks. I said, I go for H G W.
I would think.
I did turn a lot of things sick because I went home for lunch. Parked the seven.
Here's the whole thing.
It'll be nice when it's completely done.
It will be. You know, I think they're actually repaying.
That was part of the bid that they have to fix wherever. Fishers did a really good job when they did Gear Street. They want a good base on there. No doubt. Let's say screw numbers, they put the green space.
Yeah.
And all they do is take the width out of the road.
Yeah, because truthfully, that extra foot may have would have made a huge difference.
Would have been a big difference.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want to plow Gear Street. Cardboard, that's gonna be tight.
Say what happened to side of our.
No, I mean. Cause I, we just got the tractor bolt blown out. I knew my neighbors over there. And Joey.
Is anybody living in that house? Oh, yeah.
And it's been like that for probably twelve years. Actually, there's, you can see they come in the yard. There was a tree on the roof. And it's off, so I don't know animals. Just like.
Little house. We, we lived in there when I was born.
The last.
Probably three year old.
That was the house you lived in?
One right below you.
Okay, yeah.
The white picket fence around it.
Was that during the dining or is that?
I think that's.
Grandparents.
Sold by the most key back then, we sold it.
Okay, okay, well.
He had built that little garage.
Yeah, the concrete. Yeah, it couldn't.
I think it was built on a big. Their addition on the top of it.
Yes.
Yeah, I think basically whoever they sold it to, people were still. Yeah, hate to go inside or.
No, it's been flooded. Is that catfish gym? Pikes breaking. Yeah, the last thing that I remember. That was coming out. At the window. Now we.
Yeah, then everyone else threw something to that. He didn't really also get them right out.
Well, I know what they did.
Close it up. Jury real.
Same. Oh, yeah. Funny because they usually come out on Thanksgiving. A couple of days. In the winter.
We've already hired a chef.
The state. Kicked around. Twenty months or what? Like, I can't believe anybody could live that way. And then this kind of kids. I mean. War.
Yeah.
So that I am some of the pages I read. Be seen. Mind body. Anybody lives. I wouldn't, I wouldn't let dogs. I wouldn't let the dog.
Well, yeah, well, it's gonna be like a tap. But that's okay.
Yeah.
You can have as many portions. I have a big note taken. I like them. Yeah. I'm not running. I'm building the building and I got a couple.
Regardless, I hope that they're successful. Like to see.
You have my stuff.
I'm a, I'm a. For.
Exception of Steve is everybody's iPad working okay right now? I know with. I know you, you, you have it.
Uh, yeah, it's still up in the cabinet where I put it. When you give it to me.
So when you use it, I'm gonna take it.
If you want it back, I'll give it to you.
I use it by briefing.
See, when there was new updates that need to be done on the iPad, so when the new update like emails. And so we had to reset up all the accounts. All accounts. So I assumed the same thing happened to these ones that I had.
I didn't bring those to do my iPad because I'm only can. I'm only here for.
Oh, that's fine. Yeah, well, but uh. Is, yeah. If it doesn't, if it doesn't work, just bring it down. Reset up. Steve's, I know it's okay. We just. Yeah. I do like my paper copies. Does anybody, anybody need a paper now? It's just. I have to get that mine and I don't want to. I get it.
That out. With one.
I'm pretty missing.
And that's gonna be one of us.
Nobody here, he's not coming. Just had a. Kimberwood surgery.
So is it? We were looking for a new person. So even if he. Was okay. But he had.
Dead right now. I guess I did.
Charge it up. Keep it, charge it up and let me know. Cause I won't use it. Jonathan, I love it. I use my.
Well.
I use my.
I have officially one million dollars. I like the counter. For me. It is for me too. Yeah. Because I like to take my notes.
I said that. I get lost. The back.
I was gonna celebrate. I want every.
Yeah.
Across all.
Significant detail. That's not.
Well. I know the lots are. Behind. Those are. Probably.
I said something. But look. Renner put me on it. There is one. That's on the council. You should, you'll be fine. Actually, Jerry says. You owe me some favors.
I'm not betting the farmer until.
So he gave him fifteen years. He's used it.
Yeah. So John, I have to obviously accuse myself.
No, we're not gonna. I'll go through the minutes and stuff. When we get to that point, you can.
For the night. Hey. Wait to order which they were gonna come in. Uh, I left before they were done. There were still, there were still three left when I left.
He's actually. Yeah, his term is actually. And maybe Terry told.
It wasn't surprising.
No, his terms.
You don't come.
I don't. I thought he was gonna stay on till the end.
Three, two years.
Uh, no, they're four. I think Jim. James.
They're four years. Um, they're four. I think there may be like a five in there for depending on. When you, you're on a twenty. You know that.
Get away from that. Cause you know.
You're too young and you know it.
No, no, I'm. You're too old for this.
I got one for sure.
It takes me back to when. Everybody, people were asked. Maybe they were. That makes sense. Six acres. Do you remember? When it was just me those.
I was expecting.
I don't know many. And it grew. Many of. We screen our condition. I want to treat the toys and stuff.
They just.
From all over. The whole thing was. Definitely as small as. And then. Those stories. Those who. She goes. Being. Asked. There's some. People who are.
Well, that's right.
It's been so. There were sorts of people in. In six, eight months. People who aren't. Several. Free to show. That's kind of the way. Look at it. I seen it. People. The rest of the leaders. I just laughed. Care.
Yeah.
It is amazing.
I don't like house pets. I just think my desk.
So how did your son survive an afternoon with my brother? The morning?
He freaking loved it. He's been watching medical songs too.
I think he more from medical song than program.
I guess he had an exciting day. There was a couple of interesting days.
Yeah, they were up at the courthouse. They went and Julie had to contact me. And he said. Shadowing the lawyer is no fun. Sitting around in an office. But he said, at least you were up to the courthouse, you know? Like Haley was up there working. And it just happened to be a day that was like first parent's day, so a lot of stuff on the courthouse. So they could. You know? At least, you know, he had.
He comes to court and Haley was like. I'll be.
I think she went through college in years. And law school. I mean, I think she's only like twelve, one years old.
You guys all ready?
Yep.
Sure. You guys ready?
Yes.
Okay. We'll go ahead and call the zoning board appeals meeting for Wednesday, November ninth, two thousand twenty-two to order. Call the roll, please.
Rancy.
Here.
Lady.
Here.
Kate.
Here.
Monahan.
Here.
Jansen.
Here.
Nigel and Anderson. Rosenfeld.
Here. We do have a quorum. Okay, under. Item twenty-two Z dash two thousand and four approval of minutes of the regular meeting of September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Understand a motion. The motion approved. We have a second. All votes in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. It was supposed to be carried. Okay, the next one is twenty-two PDA dash oh-two. This is a public hearing. Owner and applicant, True North Quality Homes LLC, request for an amendment to the plan unit development plan. To add an additional eighteen point two four acres upon annexation into corporate, corporate boundaries of the city of Galena. Just remind everybody, you're gonna speak in this public hearing. Make sure you're signed in on the appropriate sheet back there. When you come forward, state your name and your address for the record. So I will entertain a motion to open a public.
Go ahead, James. I think I should. May I, I need to recuse myself.
As the record showed, Jim has recused himself. So I entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion, got a second?
Second.
A second. All votes in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It was supposed to be carried. Okay, first thing we'll do is anybody who is gonna testify either for or against. I will be sworn in by Mr. Nax, so.
Anybody who's gonna testify for or against, or possibly would you please raise your hand? Promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have, we're gonna come forward and. We'll begin.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Sandy Lawrence. My address is thirty-six, thirty-eight I C Drive in Madison, Wisconsin. I am the president of Yandee. And I will be involved in the development and operations for the Parker project. We are really excited in presenting this amendment since it provides us the opportunity. To improve on the design of the approved preliminary PUD. After we purchased the additional eighteen point two four acres. We realized the beneficial changes we could make to the layout of the approved PUD. Jim, Beth, Jake, and Andy Reader will be providing an overview of those changes. Under current county zoning, the additional eighteen point two four acres are zoned agricultural. If annexed, it will come in as limited agricultural. We are not requesting a change to that zoning designation. Because we are adding the additional acreage, the approved PUD, this will result in dual zoning. Therefore, in consultation with the city, we are adding an amendment to the approved PUD per ordinance one five four point nine ten three. PUD T and B rezoning and plan review, specifically F one A. We hope to show you tonight the benefit of supporting this amendment with a positive recommendation to the city. If this amendment is not approved, the preliminary approved PUD plan will remain in force. I'm now gonna hand over the presentation to Jim and team, provide an overview of the amendment. And I'll be providing you a map that Jim will be projecting. So this is just a larger blow up for you all. If you just wanna grant one.
No.
Hi. My name is Jim Baraski of County Street. South M Street. Um, this evening, our team is presenting an amendment to the previously approved preliminary PUD plan for the Parker. Our goal is to demonstrate how each amendment is consistent with the zoning ordinance and with the goals of the comprehensive plan. This amendment is not approved, then the project will proceed in accordance with the original approved preliminary PUD. I'd like to start with an overview of the differences between the original approved plan and the proposed amendment. This first slide shows the boundary of the previously approved plan, which is there. And this is, this is Blackjack for reference. And then here is Park Avenue. Uh, the shaded area to the right. The shaded area to the right there, that is the additional eighteen point two, eighteen point two four acre addition, which is part of the amendment. This is an update of the elevation map that showed the first time around. Here is the original boundary again. You see here. And then that shaded portion over there is, is the, the additional acreage. If we use the corner of Blackjack Road and Fourth. Here. As elevation zero, zero, then you'll notice that the creek bed along here is about thirty-eight feet below that. Marine Hospital is up here at plus seventy-eight feet. The, the, the ridge line, the bluff edge is about eighty. And then the new high point on the property. Um, is up here in this upper left-hand corner on the new piece of property. And it's about a hundred and sixty-four feet above the intersection of Blackjack and Fourth. Should also point out that down here to the east is where the new entry will be. So, um, some of you have seen that gate. I'm gonna show a picture of it, but at some point here, but just across. The creek, there was a bridge that crosses the creek and just to the right is where the, the new entrance will be. Like to show this map. Which, which is showing, is showing what the differences are between the, the original plan and now the new plan. So. The elements that are shown here in red are elements that are being removed from the project and the purple ones that are ones that are being added. This major element being removed is this red road to the left. Here. Okay. And that was the lower ring of Marine Hospital cottages. And, uh, those cottages will go from that position and they will be redistributed in other parts of the project. Second major element being removed is the original entrance off of Blackjack Road, along with the large detention line. You see that? These two changes to the plan will result in us having to remove four fewer acres of trees. While at the same time, you're eliminating thirty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-four square feet of paving surface from the original plant. The purple boundary to the right here, that is the boundary of the new property, ten point two four acres. And. That purple line there is the new entrance road. I should also point out that. Purple lines running north here and to the left here, um, those are new trails. Here's a picture of the new entrance on the east side of Davis Creek. Um, many of you might know this place, this, this position. So for reference purposes. I wanna start with showing the original preliminary approved preliminary PUD. On the right, you'll see the additional eighteen point two four acres. Now, that eighteen point two four acres is going to be, it will come into the, um, project as limited ag. Um, and then it'll stay limited ag. You'll some, notice the original entry. Here. Will go away. And then you'll notice that the lower cottages below the Marine Hospital, closest to the Park Avenue and the neighbors. Will then also go away. So when this project is completed. It's, it's mostly the same and I could point out, we can look at the main building. Which is here and then the winery, which is there and then the cafe. That, those, those buildings pretty much stay where they were. Okay? See between each, this is the original plan, their original locations. And then here are the revised locations and you can see that they move only a slight amount. And then the roadways are shifted a little bit and some of the cottages are moved around as well. So here is the revised project showing. The additional eighteen point two four acres with more vineyard planted up at the top. Um, and additional prairie planted all along this hillside. Also notice in the development is adding trails, adding another mile of trails, uh, actually. So there's a total of two and a half miles. I should point out here that. The trails will be open to the public. I know the annexation agreement has language that gives the owner discretion to limit the use of the trails to guests. But this language was added to protect the property in the highly unlikely situation that members of the public misuse the trails. The fact is, the trails being open to the public is good for the project and the users. So as long as people respect their use, the trails will be open. I'd like to remind you of the portion of the project that's already been completed, which is phase one A. Phase one A was the planting of this portion of the vineyard, which is approximately five acres. And here are pictures of the completed. Vineyard. Of that five acres. So now I'm going to take you through the revised spacing plans. To show you how the eighteen point two four acre addition has altered our thinking about the order of construction. Here again, um, is phase one A with its five acres of vineyard. Because the new entrance is now on the far east side of the project, way over here. Um, and a portion of the vineyard has been planted already. We think it makes sense to build the cottages near the vineyard first, along with the rehabilitation of the Marine Hospital. You can see this existing driveway, which will be the new entrance. That driveway will be improved. So it's two lanes. It'll be widened, two lanes, and it'll be, it'll be paved. You will also plant another six acres or so of vineyard at the top of the property. And plant a prairie on the slope to the road. That's this prairie right here. Some of you have maybe driven past or you'll see there's quite a bit of, quite a bit of erosion off that hillside because it's pretty steep. But we'll, we'll be using these infiltration bio swales here, here, and here as part of the prairie. Um, and that should reduce the current amount of stormwater coming off the hill into Davis Creek. The new driveway here. New driveway will continue through over to the Marine Hospital. Sort of following the contours across the property. And then Marine Hospital will be rehabilitated in the manner in which we talked about it in the preliminary PUD. Winery and its parking will be built in this phase along twenty-eight cottages overlooking the vineyard. So here's the, the winery. And then here are the vineyard cottages. The main road going across the property. The main road going across the. the main road going across the property is two lanes. And then the, the loop where the cottages are will be one lane with parallel parking on the road right in front of the cottages. The westernmost portion of the walking trail, which is way back here, that will be completed in Phase One B along with its connection down to the Glean River Trail. Phase Two will add twenty-six ravine cottages and twenty-two cottages in a loop, sort of an upper loop, I guess you'd say, around the Marine Hospital. And then Phase Three will add eighteen cottages in a prairie setting, which is right through here. And, and as with the approved preliminary PUD plan, we'll add the main building with its parking, four acres of gardens, additional trails, and the cafe. And then finally, Phase Four will will add twenty-six hillside cottages and the last section of trail, bringing the total trail length to two and a half miles. I'd like to reiterate here that the only thing that the board is voting on tonight is the amendment. The plan we're showing does not increase density or intensity of the project, and it's already been approved. We have the same number of cottages and guestrooms as the previous plan. We also have the same number and size of the other buildings on the site, like the winery, cafe, and main building. But there are some important differences that needed to be pointed out. Number one is that with amendment-
Who's watching, who's online? Mary Beth Donald. Anzio Bird, Roger Julian, Galena Library, Sam White, Julie Spangler, Dan Snyder, Cindy Pepper, Mel Granton, Pam Bernstein.
Oh, so whoever was just calling out those names, your mic is actually on? And I, we were maybe hoping that it could be turned off? Now I have to go all the way to the end. So I wanted to point out that there are some differences between the original plan and this one. And number one is that with the amendment, the landscape surface ratio has increased to eighty-four percent from the eighty percent at the original plan. The minimum landscape surface ratio for planned commercial district is thirty-five percent. The new landscape surface ratio is still eighty percent in the planned commercial area, but the overall LSR is now eighty-four percent. And number two, the floor area ratio, or FAR, which is the total building area as a function of the total site area, has decreased. The allowable floor area ratio for planned commercial district, where all the buildings are located, is twenty-five percent. We are now at four point four percent in the planned commercial area and three point six percent overall. Now I'd like to turn the presentation over to Beth, who will discuss the project's performance with the comprehensive plan.
Hi, I'm Beth Baranski, and my home is at ten fifteen South Bench Street in Galena. You want to note here that the amended project will comply with the Galena Building Regulations, the Highway Twenty Overlay District, and the Stormwater Cross-Connection Control Ordinance requirements, as well as the lighting standards. All required permits and assurances will be submitted at the appropriate times to document compliance. Here we're simply showing how the project area relates to the Highway Twenty Overlay District. A small portion of the property falls within twelve hundred feet of the center line of Highway Twenty. If you look, here's the, the center, I'm sorry, the center line. And the project is just a little bit here that falls within that. The bulk of the PUD area falls in the area between twelve hundred and twenty-four hundred feet of the center line, for which the only guidance is listing of law materials that are discouraged. A non-administrative Highway Twenty Development Permit will be obtained as required. In looking at the project relative to the comprehensive plan, it's important to understand the role the plan plays in community land use development, what the plan is and what it is not. Comprehensive plans are long-term plans to help guide community growth and development. Unlike the zoning ordinance and other ordinances that regulate the use of land, comprehensive plans are not enforcement documents. A comprehensive plan is a reference and a guide and the basis for zoning ordinance. The criteria that were used as for evaluating this amendment requires that the comprehensive plan be considered when evaluating proposals. The comprehensive plan is not a rigid unchanging plan, nor the final answer to all problems in the future. A comprehensive plan is based on the knowledge and goals at the time of adoption. Plans are meant to be flexible and to be updated when necessary. Then, related regulatory ordinances need to be updated accordingly to ensure proper implementation of the plan. The comprehensive plans are a basis for making rational decisions, but they don't replace the decision-making process. Looking at a few of the maps in the comprehensive plan may help to illustrate the role of the comprehensive plan as a general reference for land use and development. State statute gives municipalities the ability to annex properties that are surrounded on three sides by city boundaries. The comprehensive plan recommends that the city consider annexation of properties that are bonded on three or more sides by the city. The proposed annexation map to the left is not the map prescribing exclusively the properties that should be annexed by the city. It's a little bit hard to see this up here, but these areas are the annexed area, showing the annexed areas to be considered for annexation. The areas are not showing, that are not specific parcels of lands designated for annexation. For example, there's a small portion of the Parker Project unrelated to any defined parcel, a little triangle down here at the bottom, that is included in one of the proposed annexation areas. What the proposed annexation map does do simply is illustrate areas that the city boundaries encompass on three sides, which should be considered for annexation. Looking at the map on the right, the county's nineteen ninety-nine comprehensive plan initiated a cooperative planning effort with municipalities within the county, identifying contiguous growth areas, or CGAs, if the expressed desire to direct development to existing development centers or infrastructure and services are readily available or easily provided. CGAs are defined as that area around the municipality in which that community anticipates and desires growth to occur in the foreseeable future. This language and intent remains in Section eight point three of the county's twenty-twelve plan update. The contiguous growth area map identifies areas the city anticipated and desired growth to occur in the foreseeable future at the time the map was created in two thousand and seven. The map is not a map prescribing exclusively the properties on which growth can and should occur. If the proposed annexation map and the contiguous growth area maps were meant to show areas defined exclusively for development, they would cover the same areas. What can be said is that the Parker Project is located in the vicinity of and immediately abutting areas that were anticipated and desired for growth in two thousand and seven. The proposed land use plan illustrates the plan intent described in the narratives. Areas remaining as undeveloped, undeveloped green space are identified. Basically, the eastern entrance to the city on twenty over here and areas along major waterways. The proposed project area was not designated as a permanent green space. Having said that, a significant portion of the total project and nearly all of the proposed eighteen point two four acre addition will be maintained as open space. At the time that the comprehensive plan was adopted, proposed uses had not been identified for the project amendment area at all. Therefore, existing land uses are all that are shown on the proposed land use map in the project area. No land use decisions one way or the other have been made for the project area at the time the comprehensive plan was adopted in two thousand and three. Now I'd like to specifically go through the ways the proposed amendment is supported by the comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment supports the comprehensive plan visions for growth in the efficient and attractive development of new land, with the city being proactive in annexing land to achieve its vision. The proposed amendment supports the comprehensive plan vision statement for physical environment by adhering to a high standard of cleanliness, maintaining high air quality, water and soil, protecting our historical and architectural character, and protecting and enhancing our natural resources. Areas of the amendment's proposed additional eighteen point two four acres will be planted in prairie. Changes to project roadways in the amendment reduce the amount of paved surfaces by over thirty-two thousand square feet. With the amendment, the wooded areas that will not be disturbed is increased by about four acres. The proposed amendment supports the comprehensive plan goals under ten point one, a economic development. By increasing the project trail length by one mile in performance with the comprehensive plan to further develop the natural resource base to provide additional attraction for visitors to the area, this could include the construction of trails under Goal Seven Tourism. And by planting additional prairie, reducing the amount of paved surface by over thirty-two thousand square feet and increasing the amount of wooded areas not to be disturbed by about four acres in performance of the comprehensive plan to continue to protect the natural environment that provides the base support for tourism in and around Galena, Goal Seven Tourism. The proposed amendment supports the comprehensive plan goals under ten point three, stand transportation, by providing additional parking outside of the downtown area and developing a shuttle service to and from the downtown area at peak season under Goal Three, address downtown parking issues. And by providing an additional one-mile walking trail that are connected to the Glean River Trail in performance of the comprehensive plan to encourage visitors to walk from parking areas into the downtown by creating paths from parking areas that take visitors past historic structures, Goal Three, address downtown parking issues. The proposed amendment supports the comprehensive plan goals under ten point four, public and community facilities, services, and utilities. By increasing the percentage of open space in the amended project, which improves stormwater management opportunities. Innovative infiltration and detention methods such as rain gardens and bioswales will be incorporated to manage onsite stormwater. Improving in performance with the comprehensive plan stormwater management in newly developing areas to ensure that current stormwater concerns are not exacerbated under Goal Two. And by providing increased property tax revenues that can be directed by the city to, in performance with the comprehensive plan, address the capital equipment and staffing needs for the police and fire departments as both will require additional equipment and staff as the community grows and tourism increases, Goal Nine. The proposed amendment supports the comprehensive plan goals under ten point six, natural resources, by planting areas of the proposed additional eighteen point two four acres in prairie, by changing project roadways, reducing the amount of paved surfaces by over thirty-two thousand square feet, and by increasing the amount of wooded areas not to be disturbed by about four acres. In performance with the comprehensive plan, continuing to use the natural beauty of the region to attract tourists and ensuring that the development is consistent with the premise of protecting the environment under Goal One, protect and preserve the natural beauty in and around the city of Galena. The proposed amendment supports the comprehensive plan goals under ten point seven, land use and development, by annexing eighteen point two four acre addition to the goal, but in performance of the comprehensive plan, all new development on the edge of the city annexed to the city to gain access to city sewer and water utilities, Goal Thirteen. The proposed amendment supports the comprehensive plan goals under ten point eight, intergovernmental cooperation by maintaining the default limited agricultural zoning designation upon annexation of the proposed eighteen point two four acre addition by planting the eighteen point two four acres in prairies and vineyards by enhancing the project's overall park-like atmosphere through an increase in the landscape surface ratio to eighty-four percent. And by reducing the floor area ratio, that is the ratio between building floor area to overall project area, down to three point six percent. In performance with the comprehensive plan to protect and maintain the rural character of the city of Galena and the surrounding areas as the city of Galena and the region continue to grow. And now I'm going to turn the presentation over to Andrew Reeder, Senior Project Engineer with Bear Ground.
Hello, as Beth said, my name is Andrew Reeder. I live at twenty-three sixty-six North Glen Avenue in Montefiore, Illinois, and I'm a Senior Project Engineer with Bear Ground. I'm also a Certified Floodplanning Manager, Certified Professional in Erosion and Sediment Control, and licensed as a professional engineer in Illinois and Wisconsin. I'll be discussing a few slides related to the proposed site. The first slide shows a proposed layout for the site roadways and site water and sanitary utilities at completion of all construction phases. As Jim previously discussed, this construction will be phased, and the site improvements will only be constructed as needed for each phase of the development. Utility plan has been updated from the previously approved preliminary plan to match the adjustments that have been made to the roadway alignment. But significant additional changes have not been proposed. The previous and current plan include a sanitary sewer alignment with a crossing of the Glean River. This is not an uncommon or unsafe design or construction activity, and it is clearly allowed by local and state regulations. In fact, there is already a similar river crossing currently in Golden. The river crossing to be down. This exhibit identifies the proposed preliminary site stormwater management plan. The development team plans to make the project a low-impact development by incorporating premium infrastructure approaches. Approaches will include minimizing ground disturbance, minimizing impervious areas, incorporating small local BMPs, best management practices close to the point of discharge, like rain gardens, infiltration basins, and bioswales to reduce the size of larger project facilities and minimize soil protection needs. Rain gardens, infiltration basins, detention basins, and wet bottom detention basins will be designed to accommodate runoff in excess of the local BMP capacities. Full protection through a variety of best management practices, including minimized disturbance, revegetation, biotechnical stabilization, hard armor, bio-retention with stepped pools, and bioswales will be incorporated into the site design. Lastly, and most importantly, the final site stormwater design will not increase the peak stormwater discharge rate and will meet local and regional design requirements. This exhibit provides the existing boundaries of the site natural resources, including wooded areas, wetland boundaries, and the hundred-year floodplain shown in the blue hatch. As required by the city of Galena, the proposed project complies with the Natural Resource Protection Standards for woodland and forest protection and wetlands protection. These next two images show the design steps, investigations, reviews, and approvals that are still anticipated prior to the start of construction. These steps include the city of Galena for preliminary PUD amendment review and approval, which we are currently seeking before moving forward into the final design and plan development. The final design and plan development phase will include completion of the final stormwater management design, where my models will help develop the exact details of the stormwater measures previously discussed. Stormwater pollution prevention plan will be developed to ensure compliance with Illinois Environmental Protection Agency regulations regarding construction stormwater discharge. A geotechnical investigation will be completed, including soil borings and infiltration testing. The investigation will identify existing soil conditions to assist in the, in the design of the proposed improvements. After the final design and plan development are completed, permit packages will be prepared and submitted for review and approval to all applicable local, state, and federal regulatory agencies. These include submitting design plans to the Joe Davis County Highway Department for access permit approval. Submitting design plans, reports, calculations, and investigations for the city of Galena final PUD review and approval for Phase One B. Plans and permits will be submitted to the Illinois Department of Natural Resources for review and approval related to the Fish and Wildlife Coordination Act, Illinois Endangered Species Protection Act, and the Illinois Historic Preservation Act. A joint permit application will be prepared and submitted to the Army Corps of Engineers, the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, and the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. The Army Corps of Engineers will review the project for compliance with the Rivers and Harbors Act, Federal Water Pollution Control Act of provisions, and Section four oh four of the Clean Water Act. The Illinois Environmental Protection Agency will review the project, the water quality certification pursuant to Section four oh one of the Clean Water Act, and will also make a determination of additional permit and regulatory requirements pursuant to the Illinois Pollution Control Board rules and regulations. The Illinois Department of Natural Resources Office of Water Resources will review the joint permit application for compliance with the Rivers, Lakes, and Streams Act, the Fish and Wildlife Coordination Act, the Illinois Endangered Species Protection Act, and the Illinois Natural Area Preservation Act. Plans and permits will also be submitted to the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency for review and approval under the National Discharge Elimination System. This will include the preparation and supplemental of a notice of intent and a stormwater pollution protection plan. Sanitary sewer state construction and operating permit package will be submitted to the IEPA Water Pollution Control Division to review the project for compliance with the Environmental Protection Act and the regulations developed by the Illinois Pollution Control Board. Lastly, a public water supplies construction and operating permit package will be submitted to the IEPA Division of Public Water Supplies to review the project for compliance with agency regulations. As you can see, this PUD amendment hearing will be followed by many additional steps and reviews to ensure the project is constructed in compliance with local and state requirement. Thank you for your time and consideration, and allow me to back over to Jim.
So, um, I'd like to highlight a couple of aspects of the project as they relate to the Natural Resource Protection section of zoning. So the city sent us review comments after we submitted our proposal back in September and asked how we were meeting the buffer yard requirements in Table one fifty-four six oh five point three. While there are residences located on parcels immediately adjacent to the approved preliminary PUD plan and the proposed acreage added as part of the amendment, these parcels are generally zoned limited ad for which no buffer yard is required. The medium-density residential zoning district to the north of the property is separated from the developer by right-of-way. You can see that. Right? You see that right there? There's a right-of-way that runs right through here. And so per the Galena zoning ordinance, one fifty-four six oh five F two, buffer yards are not, are required along only interior property lines and above another property and not along streets or rights of way. Therefore, no buffer yard requirements apply to the approved preliminary PUD plan or the proposed amendment. However, for general reference, a type three buffer yard is required to be at least thirty feet wide. The actual distance between neighboring parcels and our nearest trail ranges from about eighty feet to three hundred and fifty feet, and the buildings are further still. There is also a significant change in elevation from which further reduces the impact. Also, for general reference, a type three buffer yard would require a minimum of five hundred and sixty-five landscape points for one hundred and eighty feet. Based on the actual tree survey conducted around the Marine Hospital, there are about ten six-inch caliper or larger existing trees for one hundred and eighty feet in the wooded areas of the slopes separating the project from the neighboring properties. This will provide seven hundred and fifty landscape points without even considering all other existing landscape elements such as smaller climax, climax trees, and shrubbery. Another question was regarding the protection of steep slope areas as required in Table one fifty-four five oh three point one. This map shows steep slope areas. The green areas are slopes from twenty to thirty percent, and the yellow areas show slopes over thirty percent. The areas in red show the areas of disturbance within the twenty to thirty percent slope areas, and the areas in dark blue show the areas of disturbance within the over thirty percent slopes. According to Table one fifty-four five oh three point one, for steep slopes from twenty to thirty percent in non-residential uses, seventy percent of the area shall be protected. The total protected area within the twenty to thirty percent slopes at the Parker, now use this, is ninety-two point eight one percent. Also, according to the, to Table one fifty-four five oh three point one, for steep slopes over thirty percent in non-residential uses, eighty percent of the area shall be protected. As you can see, the total area protected of slopes over thirty percent at the Parker is ninety-one point three eight. I would now like to turn it over to Sandy for a summary.
Well, Beth is just handing out a copy so you can follow along with the next section. So our hope is this presentation provided everyone with an understanding of the positive changes this additional acreage provides. Next, I am going to provide a summary of our amendment submission as it relates to seven zoning approval criteria from ordinance one five four point nine two. So we put up the seven that I'll be going through so people can follow along. In C, approval criteria, the first point, whether the existing text for zoning designation was in error at the time of adoption. This criteria does not apply. The approved preliminary PUD plan has an underlying planned commercial zoning district, which is appropriate for the project. And the eighteen point two four acre addition is currently in the county and in the general agricultural district, so the city's existing texts and zoning designation do not apply. Number two, whether there has been a change of character in the area or throughout the city due to the installation of public facilities, other zone changes, new growth trends, deterioration, development, transitions, et cetera. There have been changes in the character of the area, including the following. A, the new sewage, the new sewage treatment plant was built with excess capacity to allow for community growth, and the new location south of town altered the sewage treatment plant service area, making this proper, property readily serviceable. B, tourism and outdoor recreation have increased in this area, and the approved PUD and proposed amendment aligns these changes. The development of the Galena River Trail is a significant recreational amenity which can be directly accessed from the project. And Horseshoe Mound Preserve has been developed in the area with Blackjack Road access. Whether the proposed rezoning is compatible with the surrounding area and defining characteristics of the proposed zoning district, or whether there may be adverse impacts on the capacity for safety of the portion of the street network influenced by the rezoning, parking problems, or environmental impacts that the new zone may generate, such as excessive stormwater runoff, water, air, and noise pollution, excessive nighttime lighting, or other nuances. The proposed rezoning is compatible with the surrounding area and the defining characteristics of the proposed zoning district in the following ways. A, this brings the eighteen point two four acre Parker parcel into the PUD, but maintains the limited agricultural underlying zoning designation resulting when the parcel is annexed into the city. B, it increases the percentage of open space. C, it reduces total paved area. D, it reduces the project floor area ratio if they are. E, the added acreage is consistent with rural and agricultural nature of the area. F, the project addresses traffic and parking concerns through the provisions of a shuttle service from resort and through encouraging use of the Galena River Trail. G, the additional eighteen point two four acre park parcel increases the total percentage of open space from eighty percent to eighty-four percent, creating greater opportunities for innovative stormwater management. And H, the project uses dark sky lighting techniques and fixtures to serve the views provided in the night sky in and around Galena. Four, whether the proposal is in performance with and in furtherance of the implementation of the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, other adopted plans and the policies, intents, and requirements of this code, and other city regulations and guidelines. The proposed amendment complies with city plans, policy, codes, regulations, and guidelines. The amended project shall meet all requirements in the Galena Building Regulations, Highway Twenty Overlay District Requirements, Stormwater Detention Cross-Connection Control Ordinance, and Lighting Standards and Requirements. We will submit all required permits and assurances at the appropriate times to document compliance. The proposed amendment is in performance with and in furtherance of the implementation of the goals and policy of the comprehensive plan. A, the proposed amendment supports the comprehensive plan vision statement for growth in the efficient and attractive development of new land with the city being proactive and annexing, next, annexing land to achieve its vision. B, the proposed amendment supports the comprehensive plan vision statement for physical environment by adhering to a high standard of cleanliness, maintaining high air quality, water, and soil, protecting our historical and architectural character, and protecting and enhancing our natural resources. In that, areas of the proposed additional eighteen point two four acres will be planted in prairie. Changes to project roadways in the amendment reduce the amount of paved surfaces by over thirty-two thousand square feet. The wooded areas that will not be disturbed is increased by approximately four acres. C, the comprehensive plan identifies planning goals in eight categories. These are listed in the comprehensive plan under element ten. As Beth provided, our proposal, our proposed amendment supports six of the eight categories. The other two categories relate to housing and historic preservation. The housing category does not apply to this project. And the original preliminary PUD submitted does conform with the historical preservation category. Within that, the proposed amendment supports the comprehensive plan goals under ten point one, economic development by increasing the project trail length by a mile to further develop the natural resource base to provide additional attraction for visitors to the area. This could include the construction of trails as outlining goal seven tourism. Planting additional prairie, reducing the amount of paved surfaces by over thirty-two thousand square feet, and increasing the amount of wooded areas that will not be disturbed by approximately four acres. This continues to protect the natural environment that provides base support for tourism in and around Galena, which is goal seven tourism. D, the proposed amendment supports the comprehensive plan goals under ten point three transportation by providing additional parking outside of the downtown area and developing a shuttle service to and from the downtown area at peak season, which is in goal three, address downtown parking issues. And providing an additional mile of walking trails that are connected to the Galena River Trail to encourage visitors to walk from parking areas into the downtown by creating paths from parking areas that take visitors past historic structures, which is in goal three, address downtown parking issues. E, the proposed amendment supports comprehensive plan goals under ten point four public and community facilities, services, and utilities by increasing the percentage of open space in the amended project improves stormwater management opportunities. Innovative infiltration and detention methods such as raining, rain gardens, and bioswales will be incorporated to manage onsite stormwater, improving stormwater management in newly developing areas to ensure that the current stormwater concerns are not worsened, which is in goal two. And by providing increased property tax revenues that can be directed to the city by the city to address the capital equipment and staffing needs for the police and fire departments as both will require additional equipment and staff as the community grows and tourism increases, which is listed in goal nine. H, the proposed amendment supports the comprehensive plan goals under ten point six natural resources by planting areas of the proposed additional eighteen point two four acres in prairie, changing project roadways and reducing the amount of paved surfaces by over thirty-two thousand square feet, and increasing the amount of wooded areas that will not be disturbed by approximately four acres. Continuing to use the natural beauty of the region to attract tourists and ensuring that development is consistent with the premise to protect the environment, which is listed in goal one, protect and preserve the natural beauty in and around the city of Galena. B, the proposed amendment supports the comprehensive plan goals under ten point seven land use and development by annexing eighteen point two four acre addition to meet the goal that all new development on the edge of the city annexed to the city to gain access to city sewer and water utilities, which is in goal thirteen. H, the proposed amendment supports the comprehensive plan goal under ten point eight intergovernmental cooperation by maintaining the default limited agricultural zoning designation on annexation of the proposed eighteen point two four acre addition, planting of the eighteen point two four acres in prairie and vineyard, and increasing the project's overall park-like atmosphere by increasing landscape surface ratio to eighty-four percent and reducing floor area ratio to three point six percent to protect and maintain the rural character of the city of Galena and surrounding areas as the city of Galena and the region grow. Going back to the fifth point from the ordinance, whether adequate public facilities and services are available or would be made available concurrent with projected impacts of development in the proposed zone. Adequate public service facilities are available to serve this project. The Parker will be served by city sewer. The sewage treatment plant was constructed with excess capacity to accommodate growth, and there is also excess storage in the water system to accommodate growth. The project will have access to city police and fire and EMS services. The sixth point from the ordinance, whether there is an adequate supply of land available in the subject area and the surrounding community to accommodate the zoning and community needs. There is an adequate supply of land available in the subject area and the surrounding community to accommodate the zoning and community needs. Both the existing seventy-eight point seven nine preliminary PUD area and the proposed eighteen point two four acre addition are adequate to accommodate the zoning and community needs. And the project is located on the southern edge of the corporate limits where land supply is. And the seventh point, whether there is a need in the community for the proposal and whether there will be benefits derived from the community or area by the proposed rezoning. There is a need in the community for the proposal as the proposed amendment will increase the community tax base and increase recreational amenities with adding a mile of trail. The community will derive benefits from the proposed amendment, including increased walking trails by one mile, provision of a destination amenity supported by city water and sewer, the additional eighteen point two four acre parcel allowing for increased open space from eighty percent to eighty-four percent, reuse treatment removal for the overall project, improved opportunities for innovative stormwater management, a reduction in the project's paved areas by over thirty-two thousand square feet, and a floor area ratio reduction to three point six percent. We need to continue to count over the city and the county and to listen to all applicants in the community. And we hope our actions today reflect that approach. On behalf of our entire team, we thank you for your consideration tonight. And we're very excited to work with you on this, and we welcome the questions may have.
Any questions for the applicant?
Yes, a couple of questions. So appreciate what you've shown us. Very nice. My first question runs around, you mentioned that doing this could potentially increase the staffing needs for the police, fire departments, and EMS services, and that you'll have access to that. Have you spoken with those departments to understand how much this will impact them?
So, um, actually, what we stated in this is that as part of the comprehensive plan is identifying that there will be a need to support increased staffing that happens through tourism. And so what we're saying is the tax base will allow the city to pay for increases. Um, there was, um, there was a discussion in the already approved preliminary PUD on the emergency services and talk around that. Um, and I was going to ask, because I'm kind of had. Um, so during the April twenty fifth, uh, twenty twenty-two city council meeting, Jerry West and Meyer stated he had talked to the fire chief, the police chief, and EMS, and they all had no problem with the development. So that was from the original PUD.
I do understand that. I did read that in the package I received that they have no problem with the development. My question was more around the, I'll say return on investment for the city. How much in tax dollars this will supply us versus will it impact us from a staffing perspective from our emergency services?
Well, I, I can't answer that because I don't know the numbers of staffing that you currently have or what your group would project they would need additionally.
Thank you.
Hey, go ahead.
I, I want a quick question. I realize that this regards the original already approved plan, but refresh my memory, Fourth Street on the Banter shows to be still a viable street that if I remember correctly, that was going to be for emergency purposes only.
Yeah, and the plan we have talked about will have a date there so that it can be used if need be, but it won't be used for visitors and.
Got one question. When this was originally approved by the city council, we had the public hearing, we want to talk about erosion from the vineyards. And you're going to add several acres of vineyards to this with the additional, uh, eighteen acres. Was there an issue with runoff or erosion from the original vineyards that were put in?
I would, I have not heard, and I have not received any complaints or heard of any complaints in the in that thing. I know. And that's what they're not long ago.
And I showed the picture. It's the, um, the area between the rows is grown, is green, it's not dirt. So, uh, there really hasn't been an erosion issue.
The only reason I asked because it was a big issue, the last public hearing about it, and I was wondering if there was any issue with it. Oh, I'm sorry. Most people tell me to be quiet. I said that the last meeting there was concerned about erosion from the vineyards that were going to be put in. And I wanted to know if there was any issue with it. Is this additional vineyard is going to cause a problem? And to me, it sounds like there hasn't been an issue with the original vineyards that were put in as far as any erosion. And we did have quite a bit of rain here this last year that would have cost it if it was.
Yeah, if you were to go up and see it, you'll see that it basically is, it looks like um, grass, but, uh, and you know, with some, uh, thick thicker leaves in there and things, but it's pretty much green. But the rows down the middle.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have one. Uh, yesterday, the, uh, we had an election and there was a referendum regarding, uh, uh, increase in or development, one or the other of EMS tax. Uh, are all of these units subject to that tax?
I would say they would be.
Well, they could be. If, if I don't know if that passed or not, but.
Well, you did. Well, wouldn't they fall under the city already has the, that tax only?
The city has a tax. I, I can't speak to that because I'm not a hundred percent sure what that tax is. It's the county's something to put it through, but I would assume they fall. I can't speak to that.
Yesterday was strictly, uh, an advisory. It wasn't.
Eleven man.
Yeah, so now it's up to the county board to determine whether or not to approve it.
So we already have that tax in.
We've got a tax. I can't say if that's simply in the county day or if it would apply to everybody.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. If not, is there anyone else to speak in favor of the proposal? Anyone else to speak in favor? Off the third dime, anyone else to speak in favor? Okay. Any of those to speak in objection? Come forward, sir. Oh. I didn't see your hand go up, young lady, but you're up here. Go on up. State your name and your address for the record.
Wendy Clark, eleven oh seven Fourth Street in Galena. Um, I'm going to give you some handouts. I apologize for not having enough of them, uh, but I, it's what I have so that you can follow along.
We can share.
Yeah. Um, I had come prepared to do a PowerPoint presentation, but I was asked, was told that although there's no written policy anywhere um, or any indication in any materials anywhere, um, apparently opponents are not allowed to show PowerPoint presentations. So I just want you to know that following around on the handout is going to be important to kind of guiding in what I say. Most of it is information that you can um, see also if you happen to have the application handy um, to look at that as well, but I've tried to put the appropriate pieces of it on, uh, on the handout stuff that you can see. And I apologize to the audience who isn't going to be able to see some of that I'm talking about. Um, first of all, it's just important for me to say that I am here in the same capacity as many others are here as a resident and a neighboring property owner uh, expressing my concerns about the park and resort and specifically about the amended PUD plan. Um, I wanted to give a little bit of context, just, um, that for, um, actually, almost exactly a year ago, a year and two days ago, four of us that represents, um, then nine, now there's ten adjoining households, first heard about the resort proposal. And then between then and January of this year, um, I and others repeatedly asked the city for information so that we could carefully and correctly consider what was being proposed. But we were told that the city had no application or other materials until January twentieth, when the application was submitted to the city. The city is by ordinance required to review the application for adequacy prior to scheduling a hearing. So by that, it appears they completed their review in a day or two because the very next day or the day after that notice was sent out and was scheduled. Um, the board and the public were allowed barely two weeks to read and comprehend an enormously complex and impacted proposal. Um, and then four months later, the city had approved everything that the developer had asked for virtually unchanged without addressing or considering any of the questions or concerns that the residents and neighbors had expressed along the way. Many, many questions have been raised. Some of them have been answered just with information um, tonight and in other places, but there's still an awful lot of questions that remain. So here we are again. I hope that this amendment might address some of the concerns that have been raised, but unfortunately it doesn't. It's simply, it, it isn't really an improved design, I would say, because the entire PUD, the commercial portion of it stays basically the same. What it does in essence is it shifts the access road about a quarter mile at Blackjack, doubles the vineyard acreage, and it reorganizes the basin. And then there are a few other things that are mentioned in the proposal. Um, there is some additional information that was provided in the presentation tonight that was not available to us, the public, in order to consider and provide our comments. So I do apologize if some of what I say, um, um, doesn't directly address some of the things that you heard tonight, but that information was not available to us. Um, nevertheless, I'll continue. Um, I want to provide a little bit of background as well. Um, we're talking about a PUD here. We're talking about an approved PUD and amending a PUD, um, to add some acreage to it. That, for anyone here who doesn't know, and I'm not talking about you guys, it creates an entirely new zoning district. And it needs to lay out certain specific conditions, um, that's referenced in one five four ninety-three H, but in other places as well for use in that new unique district. Like any other zoning district, if you read the descriptions of zoning districts in zoning ordinances, they require detailed descriptions of exactly what uses, activities, intensity, deviations, and other conditions are allowed. In the case of a PUD, sometimes you just say they're bringing stuff in from the underlying district, but that needs to be explicitly stated, and other things need to be explicitly stated as well. So essentially tonight, what's happening is you're determining whether this proposed amendment has the sufficient detail that's needed to provide a recommendation to the city council about whether or not to approve this as all or part of a new zoning district. So I'm going to go through some key parts of the application under consideration to show you that critical information is lacking and that the application, like the preliminary plan that it would amend, fails to demonstrate conformance with numerous ordinances and other requirements. On page three of the handout that you're looking at, um, just note that there are a couple of different, um, ordinances that I referenced up there, one five four three oh one F two A and B. Those aren't of any huge significance. They just indicate, um, with or without an approved, um, um, ODP, uh, operation, operational development plan, I believe. So flipping to the next page, page four of the handout. Um, page twenty-three of the application under consideration tonight says that, um, consideration of compliance with an approved ODP is not applicable, presumably because there isn't one or that's not part of this process. And yet, as shown on the page that you have, there are several references, page six, nine, ten, and other places that do reference, um, an, an outline development plan. So my reason for bringing this up is to create, is to show you an example of how there's confusion about this process, about what actually are we amending? And if you have an ODP or you don't, again, I'm nitpicking a small part of the ordinance, but what it illustrates is that you either go this direction and you need these approvals and you do these parts of the process, or there are different things you do if you're going the other way. And if this isn't really clear about something like that, um, it begs the question of what else is not clear in here. Um, if we're unclear about what portions apply and what ordinances actually apply to this, how can we demonstrate conformance? And how can we therefore recommend this for, um, approval by the council? Page five of the handout, I show the first page of, um, the application that was provided. Neither this document, um, meaning the application nor the original plan that was approved fulfill the requirements of one five four three oh one F two B nine. Sorry to rattle that off, but there it is. Um, neither document actually addresses the relationship of the project to the adjacent land uses, nor did either one adequately address the relationship to the comprehensive plan or to other plans or the PUD criteria, all of which I will discuss. Um, on page six, um, I reference, um, the first few pages of the application. They're very unclear as to their purpose, and they add confusion to the application. Um, I, I have some sample questions on what would have been the slide, if you've been able to see it, um, that show just examples of how this part of the application provides incomplete information. It spins information essentially, and I get that the job of the applicant is to try to convince you that the project they want to do meets requirements and does lots of good things. There, there's nothing wrong with that, but in an application that you're using to develop a zoning district, it needs to be more clean of that kind of thing and just sort of answer the questions. Um, and the first few pages are, are, I find them fairly misleading in terms of providing useful information, um, with which to decide if, um, there is enough here to create a new zoning district or to amend the zoning district that was created. Um, I wish that I had time to go through each page to point out all that information. I guess maybe I should have done that, but we'd be there all night, and I don't think anybody wants that. So what I have is more of a sample. Um, page seven of the handout references page five of the application. Um, whether or not something conforms or how you bring things from underlying zoning districts has to be based on the actual verbiage of the ordinance. I'm not sure verbiage is a real word, but anyway, um, not on a paraphrased version. You have to look at the actual language of the ordinance and see what you are or aren't going to bring in or deviate from. So just to be clear, as I've shown in the side of the, um, image on the page, limited agriculture, which would be the underlying zoning of the part that's being brought in and amended, um, is, its purpose per one five four two oh one A one is to permit development of a highly rural community character. Um, just to be clear about that. Then, in other portions of the zoning code, table one five four four oh three one, one five four four oh sixty-six, and other places, um, the allowed uses in limited agriculture are described. Yet the proposal lacks information about which of those would be or would not be adopted into the PUD district. We've been told it will remain limited ag, but we've also told, been told it's going to be part of this newly created PUD district, which is its own zoning district. So it's, it's, it needs to be pretty clear what of the limited ag stuff is being brought in and what isn't. And what uses will actually conform as part of this newly created district. So for example, um, on the new eighteen point two four acres, there will be a major access road to a planned commercial zoning district. Um, the county has said that they want to consider in, in looking at how that affects Blackjack, to consider it not as a driveway, but as actually a local road because of the amount of traffic that it will have. So is that a permitted use of limited ag, or does that require some sort of exception or deviation or something to be incorporated into the zoning code to account for it or into the, the PUD ordinance when that gets created? Um, also, questions about cutting, um, there was more information tonight that was presented than is available in the document about the amount of acreage to the, um, amount of woodland to be cut. Um, but again, in limited agriculture, there are some restrictions on that and permits required. So we've seen in other parts of the PUD, certain things are said, um, that would need to be a permit that would be required by right, et cetera. But again, it needs to specify. We need to sort of know so that down the road, somebody has in hand exactly what is and isn't allowed in this whole big PUD district. Um, vineyards, there's been a, a, a lack of information about, um, vineyards. I'm happy to hear that erosion doesn't seem to have been a problem so far. That's good news. Um, but there's also things like pesticide use that hasn't really been addressed. Um, if they do or don't plan to use it, this is within the city limits. Pesticides are actually not the same as, um, some of the other agricultural chemicals. Um, some of them are controlled and require permits to apply. It's not like going out and throwing in hydro smoggy on the field or, or me out there spraying weed in the yard. Um, so that is, um, some information is, that's needed um, because this is, the idea here is that this is going to be within the city limits. So right now it's out there on a farm and different rules apply, but once it's part of the city limits, we have our own rules within the city limit, and so, um, those things need to be specified. Vineyards also require disposal of large quantities of chemically treated prune plant material. Pruning is a major, major part of, um, vineyard management. Um, per table one five four three oh one one, composting operations within the city limit require permit. Okay, fine. We also know that within the city, right, open bearing has been banned. So it would be helpful to know what method is going to be used. This is something that is generated by, um, a lot by a permanent activity. Um, also, the ag operation, the vineyard, um, growing of vines will be on city wire and sewer. There's been absolutely zero discussion about wine production. I don't know. I mean, they're going, growing grapes and there's a winery. So it kind of seems like they're going to make the wine from the grapes and have it at the winery. But it's not clear whether that production is going to happen onsite or not. If so, that's a serious, um, that's an agricultural operation or service. Bottling of an agricultural product is something that needs to be identified as to whether or not that is occurring and is allowed in this district. Um, those are all things that need to be addressed and answered. Um, if they're not planning on doing that, what does that mean in terms of transporting the stuff offsite and so on? That, that's another, um, issue. But also, if wine production is occurring on the site, um, wine production, there's publications that talk about the challenges for wastewater treatment because of the chemicals that are used in wine production itself and then the nature of the sweat waste that's produced. So we have plenty of capacity apparently in the sewer system and the water system, but do we have the capacity and the ability to handle that kind of specialized, essentially industrial ag production waste? That question needs to be answered. Moving on to page eight of the handout, um, which references page six of the plan Moving on to page eight of the handout, um, which references page six of the plan or of the uh application. Um, throughout the zoning review criteria, there are various references to the fact that an application shall demonstrate conformance with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans. Now, we've heard discussion about, or we've heard a presentation that says um, the comprehensive plan is just a guide and it's just a recommendation. But this, our zoning ordinances say that we shall demonstrate conformance with the plan. That's a requirement, and demonstrate means show how it conforms. Um, so the application needs to do a more thorough job of that. Now, um, it doesn't mean show how things are supported by and so on. It means they have to show how it um conforms or doesn't. There's information that was presented tonight that's in addition to that, that which has been made available previously about um the applicants of you, I guess I'll say, in terms of how things conform to the comprehensive plan. Things in the comprehensive plan, some of them are definitely things that require discussion and interpretation. Not everything is clear cut. Oh, yep, this applies or, oh yeah, that doesn't, yeah, this works and it doesn't. But all of that needs to be documented. It needs to be shown, shall be demonstrated in order to be able to move forward with this. And again, add on to the existing zoning district, and that was something that wasn't um done previously either. Um, conformance to the plan does not mean cherry picking goals or objectives that fit as the application seems to do. Although again, tonight, there was a slightly more thorough going through of things. Um, the underlying text on the handout that you have refers to comprehensive like plan goal ten point six point one. Um, but it includes several objectives and actions that are not mentioned at least in the application. Um, so what, what got um at least not discussed in the, in the printout application is um the objectives, goal one, protect, protect and preserve the natural beauty in and around the city of Galena. And part of that is identifying areas that should remain undeveloped and then directing growth to targeted areas. Um, moving on to page ten of the handout. Um, uh, you've seen this image before, um, I, I would have liked to put it to you on the screen as well, so you could see it a little better, but here we are. Um, section ten point eight of the comprehensive plan has the goal of protecting and maintaining a rural character, and the objectives and actions include um working to direct growth into the contiguous growth areas and also um agreeing on um this uh land use map that will be used during, to make land use decisions. And as you heard earlier, those things have been done. Um, again, some of the ordinances are fire, shall demonstrate conformance where. Um, this comprehensive plan tells us to direct growth into the, the contiguous growth areas. I understand that over time those could be changed, but they need to be changed through a, a, an appropriate process. The ones that were identified in the plan as it is now were identified through a pretty thorough process that involved the county and I believe the townships as well, public review and so on. So it's not something we can just sort of throw out and say, well, you know, that was a nice idea, but we wanna put one here. We have to conform, we have to comply to it. That's the, the requirement right now, and if there's a need to change that, then um, then that's okay, but the process needs to happen. Um, you can infer that areas that are not identified as contiguous growth areas or identified for annexation are therefore areas that should remain undeveloped for comprehensive plan goal ten point six point one. Um, if that's been characterized as, oh, well, no decision was made about that. I'm, I don't believe in reading the comprehensive plan that areas were just sort of forgotten about or left out. They identified areas that where growth should occur and areas where it shouldn't, it's not included as a growth area. Um, also, an important point is that the city officially adopted that proposed land use map per one five six point oh one act in the city code. So we are required to adhere to the city's proposed land use map. Um, if you go to the next page, um, page eleven of the handout, again, um, the area is not identified as a contiguous growth area. The nearest ones, um, there was mention of those, the nearest ones are residential and green states. They are not identified as commercial development. The nearest commercial development is a small area of light along highway twenty that encompasses those businesses that already existed up on um highway twenty when the map was developed. Um, this application, some more information was given in the presentation tonight. I wasn't able to capture all of it, scribbling um in my notes. But I counted seventy-four total goals in the comprehensive plan, each one of which has associated objectives. Now, not all of those are gonna apply to every project clearly, um, but the requirement to demonstrate conformance with the plan means documenting which ones do apply, how they apply, and how they are or aren't met, or at least the discussion and interpretation that goes on about that, and that has not happened. That's not provided in the information here that you guys have to work with. Um, also, some of the things about comprehensive plan goals that I was trying to just sort of capture from the other presentation, um, just to kind of be complete here. Um, there was a reference and several references about, because we're talking about this amendment tonight, about reducing paved area and reducing things and lessening impacts. But remember, we're still talking about an entire P U D that hasn't yet been completely established or hasn't been developed yet. And we're putting something in a place where there isn't really all that stuff now. So um, I think that we need to be very careful in what we hear as reducing impact to something that is actually adding to an area that doesn't have stuff already. I get the comparison with what um, what's in the commercial part of it versus what's in the um, the ag part. But overall, again, when we're talking about conformance with the comprehensive plan, overall, we're not reducing um paved area, we're not reducing um, you know, density and intensity and so on. So that's just something to keep in mind. Again, part of this is trying to be clear about what exactly, what specific things should we be considering tonight as just part of the amendment? Because the amendment isn't just the eighteen point two four acres. It includes the phasing and some things in the rest of it. So it's a little unclear, but anyway, I won't, I won't um leave that point. I'm not making it very well, but um, again, that's just something to be concerned about. There was reference to, I think it was rule ten point three in the comprehensive plan, I'm not sure I captured the number right, about additional parking. And I just really need to say that um, that isn't correct. Um, that's talking about downtown parking, parking for people who just show up in Galena. What the parker will be providing is park, is hotel parking. It's gonna be like the Ramada parking lot or the Irish cottage inn parking lot. It's parking for their guests, which is good. It's a good thing, right? Um, and maybe some of those guests will walk across the ninety-seven acres all the way to downtown and, and not, and I'm, I'm not trying to be sarcastic here. I mean, I'm being realistic. That some people may do make that walk. But if this brings additional people to Galena, and it's not at all clear that it will actually, but if it does, then great, maybe we won't need quite as much parking for those additional people that we might otherwise need. But the fact is, this does not meet the comprehensive title of dealing with parking issues. That would be one of those things, I would say, that it just is, it's not relevant to this proposal, or it doesn't apply, or it certainly doesn't conform. Um, and again, the conformance with all of these things really needs to be laid out in the application so that you guys have all that information to work with in your deliberations. Moving on to page twelve. Whether or not there's been a change of character in the area, this references page ten of the actual application. This is addressed incorrectly. Community character is defined in zoning ordinance definitions, one five four point oh one five. And it is the impression which an area makes in regard to the type, intensity, density, quality, appearance, and age of development in an area. So the area in which the whole parker or the amended part, whichever you want, or the, the added part, whichever you wanna talk about, what is the character of that area? And has there been a significant change that, that sort of warrants putting this big thing there and rezoning into this new district? In this case, the character is and always has been. The type is rural residential agricultural. The density is and has always been low-density undeveloped farming. And low-density, well, it's medium-density residential zone, but the actual character, what's on the ground is actually more like low-density or semi-rural, because there's just, you can't put enough houses in there with the floodplain issues. Um, the quality is quiet, a desirable semi-rural neighborhood. The appearance, semi-rural setting, quiet, dark. The age of development, historic, with some of the oldest houses in town. My house was built in eighteen thirty-eight. Joey Wallace's house was built before that and was one of the first units in Galena. None of those characteristics, the character of the area, none of that has changed, like since Galena began. There's a few more houses there, Black Tech's busier, so those are some, some changes, but the overall feel and function of the area is the same now as it always has been. So that does not support actually bringing in this community. The sewage drainage plant across the river keeps getting mentioned, but it doesn't actually change the character of the area. It doesn't change these things that I just mentioned. Particularly, when several properties in the area don't have access to it now, so their character is the same as they've been forever. They're dealing with subjects. Um, and this proposal would not add access for them either. The historic district is not even mentioned, but it is a key defining characteristic of the area. Um, item four in the rezoning review criteria, whether the proposed rezoning is compatible with the surrounding area. I've essentially just answered that. Um, it's answered incorrectly in the application per what I just described. Also, traffic problems keep not being addressed. Traffic problems created by the development are completely incompatible with the capacity and the safety of surrounding street network. That's a huge issue. That's like the elephant in the ring. Um, whether adequate public facilities and services are available or will be made available. First of all, adequate means we know that based on the need, we have the capacity. And that hasn't been demonstrated. The need is not shown, and that needs to be more than a conversation between one city council member and the E N S services. That stuff that needs to be documented that, yep, you know, this is how much they need, and yep, we have this amount of capacity. And that is not available in any of these um materials. Um, also, there's a good question about how much capacity should we allocate to one large business? Because what we allocate to that business is then unavailable to future development. We take a certain amount out, and I understand the sewage treatment plan apparently is a lot of capacity, which is great. But we need to talk about that. That's an issue. The community needs to decide, do we wanna allocate that much to one business? And that question has not been answered. Also, streets and roads are public facilities, and those are clearly inadequate to serve this. Moving on to page thirteen, um, whether there's a need in the community for the proposal and whether there will be benefits derived by the community or area. Uh, again, this is addressed incorrectly. Um, I underline some statements in that it's number seven on page eleven of the application. Um, I, I'm not gonna go into detail about them, maybe I should, but um there are some underlying statements, for example, increasing the tax base. Um, that actually is not supported by information or evidence. Um, it's simply speculation. Uh, there, there will be some property tax um change, I guess, because of it. Um, but in terms of increasing the tax base brought by tourism, it actually might turn out to be a trade-off replacing tourists that aren't gonna go to other places, and there's some very good information that's been titled about that now. But regardless, some of those statements are made just um as nice ideas that one would hope happens, but they're not supported by information. Now, we need information. We need to be pretty sure that this is gonna work out the way they think before moving forward with it. Um, also, one thing I wanna note about the tax base that um was not um considered in um some of the statements that were made before I came up here uh by Ms. Morris, that um you know, we, we didn't have, we don't have the information, I guess, to say, you know, how, what the impact is gonna be to be able to increase E N S services. But our E N S services are volunteer, most of them, right? A significant portion of them. So we get a, as big a tax base as we want, but unless we start hiring those positions, it's not necessarily going to matter. We have a shrinking population. We were thirty-five hundred for a long time. It's been slowly going down. The twenty-twenty census was messed up, but we're at like thirty-three hundred, thirty-two hundred. We have a decreasing pool of available volunteers to serve in those positions. And it doesn't, right now, matter how much money we throw at it if we don't have enough people to fill those positions. That, again, is a really key issue. It may not be a primary driving issue of this, but it's something that needs to be considered. On page fourteen, um, which is page twelve of the application, um, this seems to be, it's, it's a, you know, trying to lay out support for long-term community benefits. And essentially, what this is getting at is that a P U D is to be used only when long-term community benefits will be derived as a result of the development. And the simplest way to do that is to walk through the seven criteria listed on the right-hand side. Um, more efficient infrastructure, reduced traffic demands, greater quality and quantity of public and or private open space, other recreational amenities, needed housing types and or mix, innovative designs and or protection and or preservation of natural resources. I'm reading those because the folks who are listening don't have the opportunity to look at this. Those criteria need to be addressed. Now, my apologies to the audience. Um, I wanted to, to show something that I'm unable to show, but on page fifteen, I have an example of a P U D from a planning website. And this shows how, um, how to interpret those criteria. A P U D is used to allow changes from the underlying zoning. So in the example here, it's a low-density or semi-rural residential of some sort to provide community benefits. So the idea is, it's a comparison with what the underlying zoning normally would allow. In the example given here, the P U D allows them to cluster the lots at a higher density than otherwise loud, allowed, which provides certain benefits. So you can design something that doesn't have to conform to the existing underlying zoning designation in order to achieve certain very specific community benefits. So in the example, the um access road is shortened and it requires fewer easements and less utility services or consolidates them. So that responds to the question about more efficient infrastructure. Um, the example of cluster development also shows room for common state open space. So it increases open space, not based on some comparison with the previously approved part of a um plan, but over what would be available in the underlying default district. It adds a public trail, providing a recreational amen, amenity um available to everyone, and it moves development away from steep slopes and a wetland to protect natural resources. So again, that's just going to be helpful. Give the context for the next um part of what I'm gonna show you. So on page sixteen of the handout, um, I'm just gonna go through these. More efficient in this infrastructure. The proposal um creates, it goes the opposite direction. So again, it isn't taking the underlying district of commercial or the under, underlying district of ag and finding a better way to provide infrastructure to that or to the community at large. It's not efficient to add a lot of complex, hard-to-access infrastructure that the city has to maintain. Specific to the newly added eighteen acres, adding infrastructure to limited ag is not efficient. It's just not. Um, reduce traffic demands. Um, the proposal fails to address this at all. Traffic demands will increase. This has been recognized. There's never been any question. Both Illinois G O T and the county requested that the city um, recommend or require, require, excuse me, they requested that the city require traffic studies to better understand the level of congestion and crash risk that will be increased. But the city did not ask for those, and when asked why, they said, well, it's not required. This is not only not a community benefit, this is enormous and what I would consider to be irresponsible community risk. And it's been ignored, which really frustrates me because I go through that intersection almost every day. Um, regarding just the amendment piece, just to keep on track with that, if you take underlying limited agriculture that has a gravel driveway and you turn it into a two-lane major local road that serves a commercial district, that is not reducing traffic demand. Page seventeen, um, a greater quality and quantity of public and or private open space. So again, relative to the example, taking an underlying district and doing something different with the P U D to allow you to have more quality of either public or private open space. This continues to be addressed incorrectly and misleading. The definition giving in, given in the application refers to undeveloped or underdeveloped space per what's in the, um, I think it's in the zoning code. But that doesn't mean you include every square inch of land without a building on it, which is how I was told when asked that they were calculating open space. By that calculation, the strip of land between Park Avenue and the sidewalk along Park Avenue is open space. By that definition, the garden in front for the yard in front of Pat Ron Smith's house is open space. So this application needs an actually correct um calculation of open space for both parts of it. And the fact is, it's going to reduce what would be of it. And the fact is, it's going to reduce what would be there if you apply it to the underlying zoning district. Again, just a small part probably on the limited ag, but if you take a small, one-lane gravel road driveway and you turn it into a two-lane thoroughfare that meets whatever requirements it has to meet, that's going to reduce the open space on that parcel. Also, adding open space by purchasing additional land is not what the criteria is asking about. Page eighteen, and I apologize that this is taking time, that I, I just had to shift gears from kind of the way I was originally going through this. Criteria four, other recreational amenities. Again, this is not going to be met. The recreational amenities will only be available to paying guests. We heard verbally tonight that the trails will be open to the public, but if that isn't somehow codified or written down or committed to, then what that means is, at the whim of the owner, those things could be closed off to people, which is fine. That's their, that's their option. It's private land. They can do that. But the point is, there is not demonstrated addition of recreational amenities as a community benefit. And saying that the trails contribute to community benefit when any day they might decide to shut it down, which before, as, as Ms. Morris pointed out, the annexation agreement says they're not going to be available to the public. That's not clearly providing a community benefit. Number five, needed housing types and/or units. The proposal fails to address this. Maybe it's not applicable, I don't know, but actually, the whole P U D could potentially exacerbate the need for affordable housing that Galena currently experiences that you hear about all the time. If in fact, it requires hiring more people and doesn't just sort of suck from the labor pool downtown, then those people need to live somewhere. I was talking to, went out to eat at Campeche, I'm not sure if that's how you say it, not that long ago, and our server lives at Stockton and commutes from Stockton. That means she is driving on that road, adding to traffic, and her rent and her grocery money and her taxes and everything else are going to Stockton, which is good for Stockton, and it's part of the area, but she can't live in Galena because there's not affordable housing here that she can get into. If you are going to hire more people in those kind of service-level jobs, that's going to exacerbate the need. Page nineteen, innovative design, number six. This is one that has been disinterpreted very consistently. This is not about pretty cabins or faithful rehabilitation at the Marine Hospital, as has been discussed by certain other folks at different meetings. This is asking, just like the example that I gave you, is there some new or creative way of meeting the needs, and I've got this backward on the, on the text, you're meeting the needs of the development, of the, the things they're trying to provide, that will do so in a more efficient way and, and do good things, provide benefits to the community? And the answer here is clearly no. I don't mean any insult to the people developing them to say that there is nothing innovative about a resort that is scattered around hotel and event venue. That's a really common thing. That's just, it's, it's nicely laid out. I'm sure that everything will be done very well, but it doesn't provide an innovative solution that's different from the underlying district and allows for community benefits. That's what this is asking for, and this P U D and the amendment don't, don't meet those criteria. Also, specific to the amended part, the added eighteen acres, there isn't anything innovative about planning vineyards and upgrading a road on what is currently pasture and driveway. Number seven, perfection and/or preservation of natural resources. Again, another one that's continues to be addressed incorrectly in this leading lane. It's asking whether the protection and preservation of resources is incorporated as a design feature. We heard verbally tonight that maybe there are a few things that will be, but in terms of the added parcel, upgrading a road from driveway to major local access road does not protect natural resources. As a whole, it doesn't appear to have features, or at least they're not included in the application material that we have available to work with, that are designed to protect the known valued natural resources at concern on the property. It would likely, in fact, damage habitat of several species listed under the Endangered Species Act, which could result in illegal take if consultation is not done and a habitat conservation plan achieved. On page twenty, I included something that we can probably go past fairly quickly, but just to note that I, I do consultations about endangered species routinely as part of my job. And so I queried the Fish and Wildlife Service database to come up with a list of probable species occurring on the property, and then I validated that against consultations that have occurred in the immediate area to show that there's a high likelihood of these things occurring on the property. I also asked a colleague of mine with the Fish and Wildlife Service, which has jurisdiction over federally listed threatened and endangered species, and, and she replied that there could be incidental take and that that needs to be addressed. So part of why I'm bringing this up is not to sort of beat anybody over the head or say, ooh, without, you know, this might happen. It's just something that needs to be addressed procedurally, is something that needs to happen. So that's why, in the zoning ordinance, one five four nine one nine, which is the non-administrative development review, common elements of procedures, part E, states in number one, that the purpose of a pre-application conference is, among other things, to identify all the approvals necessary to construct their proposed developments, identify the most significant issues that the development will need to address, and provide the applicant with direction on how to meet the requirements of that code and other applicable codes, regulations, and policies. And I don't find anything that demonstrates that that's been done. It was good to hear from, I'm sorry, I've forgotten his name, the engineer, talking about and laying out the permits and things that will be gone through, but those things are supposed to be part of the pre-application review and documented in the materials that you guys all have available to you. Also, the, the potential endangered species act example that I gave, I mean, that's really not to do this as an example, is why one five four nine one nine E two recommends review by other agencies. It recommends it because it's not going to require it, oh, I need, I want to move my fence, you know, and encroach upon the right of right, or you don't even consult with other agencies about that. But presumably, a large, complex proposal such as this, which clearly involves permits from various agencies and has numerous concerns and issues, should have warranted that kind of review. What that does, when you do that, is it, it allows you to find out what the bumps and obstacles are going to be and design accordingly, anticipate that, not necessarily in great detail, but you know, oh, gosh, we're going to have to put, you know, do this, we might need to avoid that, rather than finding out some of those obstacles by surprise further on down road. Page twenty-one, one five four point three oh one D five, this is referencing page thirteen of the application. Again, it's talking about if you're going to deviate from default standards in limited ag, you need to show that there are clear community benefits. And it kind of ties to the whole use of a P U D thing. So I've already discussed that. Community benefits are not clearly demonstrated. But I will point out that on page thirteen of the application, the first, third, and sixth bullets there incorrectly describe private amenities that are available only to paying resort guests as community benefits or public facilities, and that is incorrect. The second bullet continues to discuss open space incorrectly, as I've already mentioned. The fourth, fifth, and sixth bullets are promises that are unsupported by information that is needed to demonstrate community benefit and therefore conformance with the ordinances and regulations. Page twenty-two of the handout, references page, I think it's seventeen of the application, and this is the phase one B zoning, and I'm not going to go into this very much. I have some sample questions that I've put in basically. It's that it shows that there's a lot of things that really aren't, there's a lot of information that isn't in here. This is, all of this, whether it's the original P U D or adding on and changing phasing and adding and mentioning a few things, is, really needs to be gone through with a fine-tooth comb and, and really need to understand what's being asked for and what's going to be implemented. Because again, as I said at the beginning, this is creating an ordinance that, that tells the developer and whoever buys it from here, from him twenty years down the road, and whoever's going to be sitting in this building twenty years down the road, it, it tells them it's the guide for what is and isn't allowed. So it needs to have all this detail. The phasing is part of the implementation and similarly needs to show what is and isn't allowed. But there's information that's not in here about various things that are listed in your handout, winery, pesticide uses, I've already mentioned those, but in phase three, there's the spa, there's nothing that's included about that. There's mention of a wedding casino, but I didn't find anything about size, uses, lighting, sound, et cetera. There was mention of expanding a maintenance building, which appears to be referring to Jim and Sharon Rinkin's farm, but I'm not sure. That's new. So expanding to what size? What uses will be allowed there? How will it be accessed? What about lighting, et cetera? And then also mentioned of the existing residents, at least on a map. There's nothing that indicates what will or won't happen there and whether that's even allowed to continue to be a residence in a playing commercial district. So there are some other things there. Page twenty-three, the stormwater runoff information. Again, I appreciate the presentation done by the gentleman from Third Ram, but what this application needs to do is demonstrate conformance with the requirements, and it doesn't. It just says we'll give this particular attention. I understand that hopefully that will, but there isn't information in here to know for sure that that's going to happen, and I, and that's a problem. I'm just looking, oh, also, like there was discussion tonight about the runoff control structures or how they're going to do it on the hill where the new access road is going to be, and that's useful information. That's good to know, but that's not in the application and it should be to point out. Most of the application says such as or opportunities for, rather than saying this is how we're going to meet this requirement, this is how we're going to do this thing. I understand you can't put in detailed engineering drawings at this phase, but you do need to find a way to at least give some pretty concrete information. Pages twenty-four and twenty-five, I'm just going to kind of skim through because, again, they, they sort of lack what would be helpful if I could show them on screen, but it, it's an example of why we really have to be super careful about excess stormwater runoff in the Davis Creek bottom. My home is downhill and downstream from the majority of the proposed development, and there's no capacity for existing excess runoff. The photos in here are from this past July. It was, it was a pretty good downpour, but it wasn't as much rain as we actually had the year before in one of the rain events. I think it was a couple inches. It just came down fast. But the left photo shows water coming down from the storm drains on Third and Rise. So there's excess runoff that's already occurring, coming through my neighbor's yard. They had to install some drainage structures to try, there's some retention structures to try to address that, and then the previous owner of my house also, at her own expense, installed some structures that aren't really working. There's a huge amount of runoff coming down off Third and Rise directly into our yards. The right-hand photo shows my property filling in to within a few yards of the house, and that's not flooding from being in the floodplain. That's runoff that came down from Third and Rise Street from paved, impervious surfaces. And then the photo on page twenty-five, it's a little hard to see in the handout, but it shows that fortunately that drains off into the creek, but it also illustrates that the problem is not from the creek flooding, it's from runoff. And then on page twenty-six are a couple of photos. One shows the runoff from the Highway Twenty Development Area. Now, I presume that when the Best Western and that gas station and Happy Joe's and Nerish Cottage and so on were developed, they submitted stormwater management plans. But that photo shows you that they're not working adequately. The county continually keeps having to add riprap to that place to account for the runoff there, and that eventually runs into Davis Creek, which in the right-hand photo shows the Ford Street Bridge, which is new, at full capacity from just a, a couple inch downpour. So basically, these illustrate the critical need to make absolutely sure that we don't add to the runoff in the Davis Creek bottom, because honestly, a couple more inches of runoff, and I'm underwater, not from the creek, but from runoff, and that's not acceptable. That's not something that the city should be approving. The, the best way to deal with that is to not approve the development, but anyway. On page twenty-seven, and, and I guess I shouldn't make light of that because it, that's an illustration of the unsuitability of the site. If you're going to add to a problem that you know exists, if you're going to add to stormwater runoff, if you're, you know you're going to add to traffic issues with no resolution, you shouldn't be approving something. It's just not, it doesn't make sense. Page twenty-seven, references one five four point five oh three, natural resource protection standards. The requirement is to show with, let's see, it's in part D eleven, now at the bottom of the page, the method of natural resource protection, preservation. It says graphic illustration to note related to how the natural features will actually be preserved. We did see a map tonight of the steep slopes. That was nice to see. That would be great if that was available to everyone so that we all knew exactly what was going to be happening. Maybe that was just recently generated. That's one part of what would be required in a natural resource protection plan. But there is no natural resource protection plan, nor was there one with the original P U D. There was a table with some information filled in that doesn't show graphically how these things are going to be protected. Finally, the last couple of pages, well, it's a couple, but twenty-eight, twenty-nine, address certain factors that cities in Galena are required to consider when they're considering rezoning, and these have been brought up at other meetings considering the first P U D and annexation and so on. And I'm not going to walk through them. You could look through, actually, I should. So one is the existing uses and zoning of the nearby property. I've already talked about that. The extent to which a zoning restriction diminishes property values. I've been in contact with a local area realtor who's been a realtor here for, I don't know, fifty years or something. He told me that, quote, during the construction phase, fifty years, values will be severely depressed for surrounding property. That takes money out of my and my neighbors' pockets. Literally takes money out of our pockets. If I want to sell my house in the next ten years while this is under construction, it will be devalued possibly severely, and I cannot tell you how much that scares me. There's no community benefit from this thing. It may not even increase tax revenues. It may not actually bring more visitors. It might just replace some, but it's going to take money away from me and my neighbors while it's being built. Number three, the extent to which the proposed amendment promotes the public health, safety, and welfare, again, traffic, stormwater runoff, and other things clearly detract from that. The relative gains for public as compared to the hardship imposed on the individual property owner. There's been speculation about gain. There's been talk about tax increases, no numbers, no clear statement that we know this is going to bring more people and more tax revenue. Property owners, meanwhile, will experience the hardships that I've already discussed. The suitability of the subject property for the zone purpose. Significant access and traffic issues can't be mitigated. Significant stormwater runoff issues will be difficult to control. Soils and geology are indicated as not suitable. I appreciate the idea that we can engineer our way out of those, but that doesn't mean we should. And the existing city and county maps and the comprehensive plan clearly identify that property as unsuitable for the proposed purpose. I'll skip to number six. Number seven, the community's need for the proposed use. I've already gone through that. There's not a demonstrated need, and then the care with which the community has undertaken its land use planning through the comprehensive plan. And as I said, it's inconsistent with at least significant portions of the comprehensive plan, and particularly the proposed land use map, which is officially documented in the city per the zoning ordinance. Since other folks can't see it, I won't go through the last few pages, but they show some views. We've seen renderings before, and I hope to show some actual views so that, so that, you know, we can talk about those a little bit. And I know I've been up here a while. I'm sorry. On page thirty, I just want to point out that you can actually see the Marine Hospital people and the silos from the Vincent Farm, and that's just an example of how visible this thing is going to be from significant chunks of town. It will change the look and character of Galena. And you guys can read the text of the other ones, but basically it shows some examples of existing lit-up places and then where more or less the parker will be and how, and ask you to sort of see that if, for example, the LaFever Inn is visible now from downtown, from the Green Street steps, from the McDonald's intersection, then the parker with all the lights and, and literally a hundred and some odd more buildings is going to be highly visible. I appreciate that there were renderings that they hoped to downplay the lighting and so on, but you just can't have that much light. I mean, if you guys have been out to LaFever Inn, that's already got like downward directed amber lighting. It's not a real intrusive place, but you can see it forever. So the parker's going to be no different. It's going to have hundreds more lights than are out there at LaFever. Page thirty-two just throws, shows a couple of, a comparison with the rendering shown from our property versus reality of Jim and Sharon's house. I do want to make a disclaimer. I understand that the light layer on the photograph from our house is misleading. I'm not trying to say, oh, my gosh, there's going to be, you know, as much light as is shown on there. I, I, I just don't know how to do, like, how to erase that or make my camera not do that. But what it shows, again, is the actuality of what is really there, the reality, and if you multiply that by a hundred or more or whatever, it's going to be a lot. And then page thirty-three is just sort of the, the shine on the glass front of the building. And again, if you multiply that by dozens or hundreds, it's pretty significant. I've thrown a lot at you in kind of a difficult format. I apologize for it being a little bit awkward for the time I've taken, but I want to express my sincere gratitude. I really appreciate seeing all up there going through this and considering what I'm saying. There's a lot of detail that needs There's a lot of detail that needs to be in there and y'all before the city can be assured that it knows with certainty and in detail what will be allowed in this zoning district and what will not. And unfortunately, this proposed amendment, like the plan that it amends, leaves far too many questions unanswered. And with all of those unanswered questions, the right thing to do this evening is to vote to not recommend this amendment to the city council. And then in your finding of fact, to explain clearly why. The right thing to do is to help the city council and everyone else just stop. Take a breath, reassess, answer questions. And think about this whole thing much more thoroughly. Make sure that if it happens, it happens with all the information that's needed to make sure that the city stays in the driver's seat. Thank you very much.
You know, we talked about, uh, Chris Wendy spoke about that this was not in the uh planned area proposed land use, you know, for the expansion and that. Was a portion of the original in there?
I don't know.
Found that triangle you're referring to, yeah, there's that small part of that.
So part of it was, okay, thank you.
Anything else? Anyone else speak again?
Jean Bobo fourteen seventy-seven, South Rocky Hill, oh, Rice Township, doing a Rice Township. Since the comprehensive plan was brought up tonight, I would like to touch base on the comprehensive plan in Fourth Street and Highway twenty. Fourth Street and Highway twenty is a Class A critical intersection. And that intersection played an extensive part of the comprehensive plan and not building out that area. And the council seems to think that that plan is old and it could be old. However, if a new comprehensive plan were to be written, that intersection that's flagged by the state of Illinois would still remain in the comprehensive plan. So there's no getting it out of that. Fourth Street and Highway twenty is a Class A certified critical intersection. And it's gonna remain in every comprehensive plan that's gonna be brought forward. Uh, again, I, I, I'm just gonna go over before I get into my stuff, uh, but we talked about runoff there and everything, and I would like to say that the twenty eighteen watershed program that was brought up and approved all over the entire county, every township, every city, every, everything, including here, was right at this desk that they did it. That property was already spoken for out there. And now that is being dropped and changed. And that twenty eighteen watershed program went through Iowa, Minnesota, Wisconsin, and to the state of Illinois. And it has hundreds of conservation programs in it. And the Joe Davis Conservation Society is the steward of it along with the watershed. So I just wanna say there's a big difference of opinion. That plan had came before this council, it's came through the entire county. And nobody is looking at that, that has already been spoken for. And there are four other watershed uh plans out there that our farmers, our people, those residents are working towards and involved in protecting those lands and doing it. And this one here is just dropped. As a matter of fact, it's going to Elizabeth and it's gonna have some new writing in it and it's gonna be ran by somebody else. So I just wanted to make sure that I talked about those two issues before I get going. Um, so like, uh, one other thing, again, the police, the fire, the EMS and a county engineer have all been stated that they have been contacted and that they don't have any problem with this. Well, the police, the fire, the EMS, they're, they are our heroes and they respond to all of our problems. And they would never, ever recommend adding traffic to a Class A critical intersection. And the council keeps on using it and people keep on using it and it, it's just bringing disrepute to those, to those departments. You can't do that, you cannot say that those departments are gonna recommend the use of that intersection to this project. And that intersection to this project is a gateway. It's the gateway to this project. And we're saying our professionals are going to turn their back on a state of Illinois and they're gonna say, everything's okay, let's rock and roll. That's not, that is not fair, and I think we owe them an apology for completely doing that to them. Um, so I wanted to make that also. Fourth Street and Highway twenty is rated by the state of Illinois as a Class A intersection. And that, it takes in a whole lot of things, if everybody went ahead and read Illinois uh, intersection, chapter thirty-four, everybody would understand what's going on there. For instance, there's speed reduction coming down and at the same time, there's spree, there's speed advancement go, going up. No shoulders, no sidewalks, handicap that, uh, hit. And on the northwest corner, the handicap had to be approved and designed. Go take a look at it, tell me where you can find another one, it's half in the street because there is no room on Fourth Street. Those cars park on their lawn, they park on the sidewalk over there to make room. And this is the gateway to where you're going. Uh, the side streets are not the highway code and they have to be if you're using that as the gateway. Those side streets, if, if section thirty-four, Illinois chapter, will say those side streets have to be the code. And they're not, they're, there's not even, the one side is just gravel. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm asking that uh you pay attention to that Class A rating. Uh, in case you don't know, the Class A rating covers all that stuff, but in just a Class A rating alone, that's accidents with walking wounded. The state of Illinois has added the word critical to this, meaning that there are accidents with injuries that involve transportation to medical facilities. This is what we're being passed up by and this is, is, is like, you have to look at it. We're under oath, we're under an umbrella. This, th- this is some, the state is out there, nobody, now, I know I call IDOT, I know other people that call IDOT. But nobody's bringing this Class A intersection up. I heard all these things tonight from the applicant and, and the last time from the applicant. Where is the Class A rated intersection that they wanna use? They cannot use it. Uh, this project is not new. This project has come up before the city council in, I believe it was May of eighty-seven. And July of ninety-three, in July of ninety-three, Mr. Baranski, he put a map together, designed together very similar to this. And the city council turned it down. Bang. And it was turned down because of the word congestion. They didn't want the same congestion out there as we have in town. And that's one of the things, and um you can look at the record and read it, the, the, the paper clipping says, says it pretty well and uh and then the last time that that intersection came up was in twenty thirteen. In twenty thirteen, we had a venue come to town that wanted to put a venue at the old Ford Farm. And um a thousand, thousand residents got together. There's over five hundred and fifty homes that that corridor brings into town. And there's a thousand residents. Okay? And the reasons that we came to the county and asked to stop that and the applicant withdrew, the re, the main reasons that we came up, came, came to for, and I'm talking East Galena Township, Old Rice Township, Elizabeth Township, Hanover Township, and all the other traffic that comes through there. And the traffic count up there is quite a bit. And we are the ones that use that intersection and we know that intersection. And you have to judge from coming down slowing and going up, up. When you get behind a truck right, right here in town, you, you just look at the smokestacks pouring out, he's gotta pedal to the metal because he's gotta go up that hill. And you gotta try to negotiate out in between down and up or wheelers. And Illinois, state of Illinois says, no, that is at full capacity right this moment. Right this moment. And adding anymore is gonna put it in a dangerous area. Um, I, I wanna then uh touch base on, on, on this issue because again, it was said that the county engineer um had given okay to this, okay to this project. And a matter of fact, Steve Kiefer stated that, and, and, and this is in quotes, Steve Kiefer stated Blackjack Road is the only means to get into the city from this side of town. Traffic will be an issue on that road and it will be compromised. You may be able to get emergency services there, but getting them back is going to be an issue. The intersection of Blackjack and Highway twenty can be dicey on any given day. So that's his words. Now we have words saying that he, he's, he's in favor of it. He has words, recorded statement of in, in uh nineteen thirteen. Uh, in twenty thirteen, excuse me, when that.
I didn't think Steve was that old.
Okay, all right, in twenty thirteen. As a matter of fact, that plan from the county came to you and three of you signed it. And the city of Galena zoning board recommended that the city council to oppose to this request. And that the city council approved a file resolution to, to object the request. Three people are here tonight that voted on that. And uh, so I don't see what's changed and somebody's gonna vote for it now. We already spoke for it once, we already says that it wasn't, we already know about the Class A intersection. So I, I, I could just go on and go on, but um, I wanna bring together what hasn't been brought up before. And this is the city of Galena Highway twenty corridor design. And this is, this is on. And with the city of Galena annexing this new property, they are actually making a new corridor. They're adding a new corridor into the city because now they didn't own that property. Now they're going to own that property. And then the Blackjack Road, the Fourth Street to the dangerous intersection is the new corridor that's being created by this project. And I don't see how you can come out at Fourth Street and Highway twenty, Class A rated. And people say, uh, uh, Mr. Westermeier asked me, well, why don't they fix it? Well, there are plenty of reasons, if you, if anybody would happen to talk to Highway twenty, they'd be happy to send a representative here. And I've talked to them, but that representative has not been asked. I've asked the city council to have both representative come here. I've asked the city, the city council, have the police, fire, EMS and county engineer come and give their statements. And that has been not taken care of. Before I forget, I also asked to use the uh audio visual system tonight, as I was gonna go that way too. And I was told that the objectors are not allowed to use it, but presenters are. Uh, and so speaking, uh, that, that should change. How do we stay in pace with somebody if we can't even use the same systems? So um, I'm just gonna have the page through this because I had it, so on page five of this, by, by the way, this is, this is adapted into the city code. So this is part of the city code, this, this program. And actually, this is forty-eight pages of everything that they wanna do that they can't do. It, it literally, if, if you read through a page per page, you can flag something. So I ju, I just flagged a couple instances. Page, uh, let me start here. I promise, I'll, I'll, I'm gonna just move right through this because it's just getting too late, but anyway. Page five. Previous contained in this manual shall prevail. What's in this shall prevail. And it's part of the code. Okay, page eight. Design standards contained here within are either mandatory or discretionary. The term required and prohibited are mandatory. Again, I'm telling you, what's in this is mandatory, no wiggle room, mandatory. Uh, on page ten, we're talking about the view shed. Discouraged development in areas of steep topography and drainage ways that afford valuable views, right in here. Page twelve. Throughout the entire corridor, it is important that their application on the particular site respect the unique qualities of the particular settings and neighborhoods. Can't get around that. Says it right here. And, and this is really interesting. On page thirteen, if you would, down here, here's the Hilltop District, right there where my finger is, that's, that's the Hilltop District in, in this manual. What they're asking for is right there. The annexed area that they're asking for is in the southeast Hilltop District. Exactly. And, and it's outlined, right outlined, right there and around, it is there. So they're asking to go into that district and follow these rules. Page, page eleven, you'll be happy to know, I don't have anything on. Page fifteen. Visual, visually, uh, brick, so they're talking about the designs, I'm gonna mess this up, but it says throughout brick, brick and design in low color, bricks in low color. There's a place in here where I get to, it says you have to have small windows, not big windows. In here, I, I didn't make it up, as a matter of fact. Um, the people here who put this together are in this room tonight. Okay? Um, and I, I'd say it by name, but I'm just not going, this was, this was written by people in this room. Page sixteen. Higher density development has to have controlled access points. Now here, nobody's talking about it. Nobody's talking about that. Seventeen. This is, now, this is interesting. This requires a traffic analyst. It's not, we're gonna do one and we're not going to do one. This worry requires that you do a traffic analyst. Page seventeen, in seventeen, you're required to. I'm getting there very fast. Well, I'm just gonna say page twenty, everything on page twenty, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven different topics on page twenty, all, all of them comply to this program, every single one of those. And if you go to page twenty-two, oh, wait a minute, skip the page, page twenty-one and twenty-two again. So page twenty, twenty-one and twenty- So page twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, all of that information on those three pages pertained to this development. And I'm not going to bore you with it because we ought to be reading it before we do anything. This goes on for forty-eight pages. So I'm just going to stop here and say that this is available for you to look at. I highly recommend that you look at it. The area that we are talking about developing lands right in this area. And I can't say enough, the State of Illinois, every five years evaluates that intersection. Now, if you remember, a year and a half and two years ago, they put in some new sidewalks and some new handicaps in there. But that intersection was just done. Just evaluated. It's sticking around for three more years. Then they'll evaluate it again. But it's never came out because of the way that intersection is. You just cannot add traffic to that intersection. If you do, you're ignoring your duties. And, and, and when we speak of duty, I mean, we speak cis fiance and non-fiance and male fiance. Meaning the neglect of duty. We have to look at this. The law says that you have to look at these articles, at these papers, and what, uh, what was said before. That's the law. And there's three words on that law. And if you look it up, it particularly likes zoning boards. So, um, I'm Jim Boho. I think we owe an apology to the police, fire, and EMS. And, uh, I'm a Marine, so tomorrow's my birthday.
Hey, great question.
Yeah, Jim. I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you brought up a lot of, uh, good points. One was the Class A, uh, reading over Highway twenty and Forest Street. Um, and you said it's at, at full capacity.
Yes.
And, and is that? I, well, I've never seen a study that it says it.
Well, it's, it's, all you have to do is call, like, like other people have. Just, but when you call IDOT, they take your name, your number, and your business so they can get it to the right place. So they know who's calling, who hasn't called down there. Alright? You ask them Jim Boho, and they say, what, ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, ninety? But I stood on all those boards with the IDOT. I, I was the chair of the board that went around Galena. So, you know, when I'm talking IDOT, when I talk to IDOT, I, I, you know, I'm a little loose up here and, but I mean, now, darn, when I talk to IDOT, I talk facts. They, they don't want to hear non-facts. That is there. It, it is current, it is up to date, and you can't get by it. It's going to, if you annex that intersection, you are creating a new city corridor to your downtown area. Period. And that intersection is full. And you can ask a thousand residents who come up. And as a matter of fact, they're talking about property value. What's going to happen to our property values? Our, our five hundred and sixty-plus homes out there? What's going to happen to them? And there are still over two hundred, what they call buildable lots out there, that are paying taxes right now today and have been paying taxes per year and are planning on using that corridor. And we're going to jam it up. And they've been paying taxes on buildable, that's the county plan. And they've been paying taxable, taxes on taxable lots out there per year. I happen to own one of them also. So I pay taxes as it is a buildable lot. And that buildable lot is going to lose its value because it can't get to town.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jim. A motion for a fifteen-minute break. Restroom break. All those favors saved by by saying aye. Aye, those opposed by here. Quick break, guys. We're going to sit down, man, we're going to come back in.
We need water.
What's that? That's just, make yourself comfortable. Yeah, that'd be great, Joe, thank you.
This, this land here is a nineteen ninety-three, uh, proposed plan by, by and a few, it's, it's here on record. So I don't, I don't know.
Oh, that's very kind, thank you.
I failed, usually I have one out for the meeting.
I won't nurse this. Matt, you're staying hot? Madison? My wife and I, we probably moved back. I love it up there. My wife actually graduated from there. She's a teacher, so. She teaches high school science.
High school business.
In Galena, that's okay.
Oh, I, I left in eighty. I went off his territory and sixty. Twenty-four years into there, sold the estate in sixteen.
They're my grandparents.
Oh, I'll be damned.
Yeah, yeah.
She was terrific.
Yeah, she was. I thought you'd be named something familiar when you said that. I was like, my grandma, my grandma's.
I know something before I was here.
Four years ago, I'm going to talk about half of downtown America. I know, I know.
Thirty-four years, I couldn't archery.
Yeah.
Here comes Joseph. I don't know that. Guys, we're about ready to get started again. Just wait for one person to, there's the guy. Alright, entertain emotionally, reconvene. The second, all those favors saved by by saying aye. Aye, both been here. Young lady.
May I please bring in one final piece I forgot to bring in?
I'll let you, Jim.
Thanks.
You've been so nice.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, get that in the way.
When this program came out, we, we, uh, got together in Rice Township again. And we sent a letter to the mayor and the council. We didn't send it to you because we were all done with you, but this is the letter, uh, by our township supervisor stating the entire Rice Township. I'm writing you on behalf of Rice Township in regards to the Marine Hospital Parker Project. This project will add substantial activity, both vehicular and pedestrian, to the intersection of Forest Street and Highway twenty. This intersection, IDOT has a critical rating. Our community uses Blackjack Order for the vast majority of its essential travels. We, as a community, are disappointed that there was no interest in contacting Rice Township prior to the approval of this project as we are greatly affected by your decision. And assign Andrew Burlow. Thank you.
Thank you. Young lady.
All I have to say is on this card.
Just state your name and address.
Kathleen Webster. And I live at twenty-one seventy North Blackjack Road, also known as three eleven Ryde Street. We've lived there for more than half a century. Okay, even though I wasn't born here. Coincidentally, I picked up one of the review papers today, and I don't know if it was yesterday's paper or today's paper. There was a story in there about a developer out on the Northwest Arterial, which is what we call the Way to California. The guy is building a hundred and five homes on eighty acres and two apartment buildings. Sounds remarkably similar to what we're dealing with here. The developer was required to complete and pay for a traffic study. And the traffic study showed an increase from twenty-one vehicles to eighty vehicles per hour between the hours of seven AM and seven PM every day. Markably similar for that amount. As far as I'm concerned, this project is going to lower our property value. And we'll be lucky when we sell it if we'll be able to pay off the mortgage. We don't have water in Swer. We would love it, but it, it was going to be pretty expensive when they finally offered it to us. This is going to destroy our quality of life, our peace and quiet, our serene little coun- country spot. And it ignores our welfare and our quality of life. There's another question I have too. All these cottages, like, the first time we were shown cottages at a neighbors meeting by Mr. Bransky, it showed three styles. One was a nice, inoffensive bike brain cottage. Another one was concrete and it looked like a bunker. And the third one looked like a miniature McDonald's with arches over the top of it. Uh, I don't know if that's still going to be what there are or I don't see what that adds to things around here. It's going to destroy our whole corner town. Thanks.
Any questions? Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Robert Mahan of nine hundred Third Street here in Galena, Illinois. And I think you had asked a question regarding the advisory referendum. Uh, and that was for the county tax, uh, hotels and motels in the city of Galena. Pay their hotel motel tax to the city of Galena. It's also set by the city. So, uh, it, it wouldn't apply that additional potential hotel motel tax to the, the Parker.
Uh, it was an EMS tax, and that's why I saw it as a different tax.
Correct, it's an EMS tax that would be added on top of, uh, the hotel motel tax collected through, through there. I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, yes, sorry about that. Hello, everyone. Uh, it's time to talk about Parker again. The good thing is that it's, uh, this time there's some new information, namely occupancy rates. Uh, these had been compiled for three years, starting in two thousand nineteen. So until the end of October, neither the developer nor any other city hall knew what occupancy rates were in order to determine. neither the developer nor any other city hall knew what occupancy rates were in order to determine if there was any evidence of a community need for more rooms. Bottom line, the Parker is bad for business, and I'll explain why. I'm the owner and innkeeper Aldrich Guesthouse, and I'm proud to, uh, be here to share with you tonight. I've been in the hospitality and service industry for nearly thirty years, and with my husband Douglas, I've been able to elevate Aldrich Guesthouse to the number one ranked bed and breakfast in Illinois on TripAdvisor and number nine in the entire United States. I state this not to brag, although we are proud, but to highlight the qualification of my testimony, both as a professional and expert in the field of hospitality and tourism, as well as a business that stands to be affected by your decisions tonight. For the next few minutes, I'll present some facts specifically relating to the community need requirement for zoning changes, as well as the city's demonstrated prerogative to protect existing businesses that I hope you'll discuss during tonight's meeting. These facts will all indicate that not only is there not a community need for this proposal, but that there is an abundance of facts that show approval of this proposal is likely to result in negative business consequences for existing businesses. The comprehensive plan, which has been discussed quite thoroughly, uh, is quoted in that application before you states in part under the local economy section, quote, "The city of Galena will strive to diversify its local economy and improve the business environment for tourism by retaining existing businesses," end quote. In the zoning ordinances, community needs not specifically identified as a factor to determine whether or not a zoning request should be approved. I'm sorry, is specifically identified. You all knew that. Uh, specifically, one five four dot nine two zero C four says whether the proposal is in conformance with and in furtherance of the implementation of the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan and, uh, other adopted plans. And the policies intense and requirements of this code and other city regulations and guidelines, and that number seven, whether there is a need in the community for the proposal and whether there will be benefits derived by the community or area by the proposed rezoning. So based on the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance, it is the expressed objective and obligation of the city to protect existing businesses when determining a need in the business community. So let's take a look to see if there's a fact-based community need, uh, based on this definition. In regards to the zoning ordinance criteria, one five four dot nine two zero C seven regarding community. The developer states in the submitted application, quote, "There is a need in the community for the proposal. The approved preliminary P U D and the proposed amendment will increase the tax base and will build upon the growing market for upscale visitor lodging and the outdoor recreational amenities such as the Galena River Trail promoted by the community," end quote. This is an unsubstantiated statement, as there's no information in the application that supports the claim of increasing the tax base has been previously discussed. And as you'll see, there is no growing market for lodging in Galena, rather quite the opposite. The applicant did not have the occupancy data when this or previous applications were submitted, since it hadn't been compiled until the end of October. So there's also no supporting information in the application regarding a need for more lodging. That's partly because that info didn't exist at the time of the applications and partly because it simply does not conform with the facts. Let's look at how the comprehensive plan and existing ordinances fit with the current situation in Galena. Please keep in mind that all the following numbers are based on data provided by the city of Galena that was compiled last month. And this is not intended to say anything poorly that the city hadn't compiled the data for three years. And it's not to diminish the work that Visit Galena does. Occupancy data is an indicator of the success of a destination, not the only definition of success. However, for the lodging industry, it's a significant indicator of what need and success looks like. Lodging occupancy has been falling at least since two thousand seventeen, with the exception of two thousand twenty-one, when Galena experienced a COVID bump. The occupancy for two thousand twenty-two is on track to end lower than two thousand twenty-one, resuming the downward trend. Occupancy of the city is now at two thousand seventeen levels. Additionally, in at least the last five years, possibly longer, Galena has not had a year above fifty percent occupancy. Per perspective, good occupancy rates for the industry are agreed to be sixty-five percent and above. This shows that not only is there a lot of unfilled rooms, but occupancy in Galena is not healthy, and it's headed in the wrong direction. The Parker is set to add an additional one hundred and forty-five rooms, which may not seem like a lot, but when you consider that Galena currently has just over six hundred rooms, that's an additional twenty-five percent more inventory at a time when we're not even filling our currently available rooms at acceptable occupancy rates. It's been said, if you build it, they will come, or that we're losing rooms to Dubuque. Unfortunately, no one has any information on if or how many are staying in Dubuque when Galena's full on those several busy weekends each year like Country Fair and Fourth of July, although there are certainly some. However, we do have a recent example of if you build it, they will come with the approval of Airbnbs. In two thousand seventeen, when Airbnbs were just starting to be regulated in Galena, they accounted for two percent of the occupancy tax revenue, with large lodging contributing seventy-nine percent. By two thousand twenty, Airbnb's accounted for fifteen percent of the occupancy tax revenues, with large lodging share dropping to sixty-five percent. During this period, not only did occupancy rates not increase, they continued decreasing. The only thing that adding Airbnb's did was change the places that visitors were staying. Galena built it, but they did not come. Using numbers from the city of Galena today, in order to keep the occupancy rate where it is right now, with the additional one hundred and forty-five rooms at the Parker, never mind stopping the consistent downward trend in occupancy rates, the Parker would have to find a way to draw an additional twenty-six thousand five hundred room nights every year just to maintain current occupancy rates. That's what a five-room bed and breakfast could accommodate if they're full every single night of the year for fourteen and a half years straight. If they don't replace those room nights by somehow attracting twenty-six thousand five hundred more room nights to Galena every year, that means a twenty percent reduction occupancy rates for existing properties. That also means a twenty percent reduction in room revenues at a time when margins are already thin and traveler resistance to higher rates is increasing. This equates to three point nine million dollars in reduced revenues for existing lodging. This averages out to six thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars in reduction for every room in Galena every year. Per perspective, that works out to at least three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in lost room revenue every year for a fifty-five-room property similar in size to the Soto House Hotel. In August, the city council did not allow a proposed food truck to be on Main Street for two and a half hours per week on a day when sixty percent of restaurants were closed and when visitors and locals alike reported that they had to wait for up to two hours for a table. The food truck was endorsed by Visit Galena, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Downtown Business Association. There were three food establishment owners who felt a food truck was unfair for the nine restaurants that were open, and the council agreed that it was unfair and that the city had a mandate and obligation in the form of a comprehensive plan and other ordinances to protect existing businesses. Other person Wester Meyer stated in part, quote, "I agree with the businesses that are open, and it could affect them," end quote. Other person Bernstein stated, quote, "I think in terms of fairness, this is not a good idea," end quote. The food truck was a temporary, tailored, and widely endorsed solution to a problem that was well documented, one that was for two and a half hours a week that when no longer needed, wouldn't be here anymore. It was denied on the basis that it wasn't fair for existing businesses. Today, the zoning board and, uh, the city council will once again be asked to approve the Parker, adding twenty-five percent more room inventory to a destination that not only has never been the industry-wide agreed-upon healthy sixty-five percent occupancy, but has never been higher than fifty percent and is declining year over year. When no longer needed, a food truck rolls away, but a one hundred and forty-five-room resort that is not needed continues to be detrimental to existing businesses. The comprehensive plan and ordinances indicate community need would specifically include diversifying the economy. Adding more lodging is not diversification, and as discussed, facts do not indicate a need for more lodging either. It also mentions retaining existing businesses. Adding twenty-five percent more lodging units when there's been no indicated need, but in fact, the opposite has been shown, does not help retain existing businesses, rather imposes extensive, extreme, undue economic hardships on them. All this to emphasize two things. Number one, the city's expressed obligation to protect existing businesses. It is indicated by both word and action in documents such as comprehensive plan and zoning ordinances, as well as the recent denial of a food truck on the sole basis that the council believes that it would negatively impact existing businesses. And number two, that when considering facts, not only is there not a business community need for this to be approved, but current businesses are likely to suffer significant negative impacts should the proposal continue to be approved. This project has a distinct possibility of reducing current lodging properties occupancy by twenty percent, resulting in a twenty percent loss of room revenue, plus any other ancillary revenue that would have come from those overnight guests. I do hope to hear robust conversation on facts that have been presented tonight when considering one five four dot nine two zero C four and seven during a discussion portion of the meeting tonight, which unfortunately I will have to watch from Zoom as I'm on a time crunch. We do not ask for fairness or equality. We simply ask for consistency, and that in light of this new information that you did not have before, that the zoning, uh, before the end of October, that the zoning board reconsidered their support for the Parker proposals is not only is there no community need, it is demonstrably bad for business. Are there any questions?
Yeah, your, your fifty percent occupancy rate, though, that's based on three hundred and sixty-five days, correct?
That's for the entire year.
So my question would be, what's the occupancy rate on Fridays and Saturdays?
Uh, that's not broken down, but, uh, if you do take a look at the, uh, occupancy rates that the city compiles monthly, in two thousand twenty-one, there were six nights or six months, uh, where the occupancy was above sixty percent for the month. Uh, in two thousand twenty-two, there's two. Uh, so that occupancy does continue to go down.
Total occupancy, but what I'm getting at is on any given Friday or Saturday night from probably April through November, December, most, most establishments are at very high occupancy rates on Fridays.
Many arts, oh, yes. Uh, however, if you do factor in, uh, even if they were only taking rooms on Friday and Saturday, it still creates about a ten percent reduction occupancy.
And is there a chance, though, that some of you, you mentioned that the Airbnb's just moved people from hotels perhaps to Airbnb's. Is there a chance that this establishment would move people from guest homes in the territory to Galena residents who are going to the city of Galena, who are going to within cap some of the rewards rather than that being dispersed out of the territory?
It doesn't seem like it would go the other way, as Airbnb's were the ones that took away from large lodging. It would be unlikely that large lodging would then take back away from Airbnb's. Oftentimes, uh, visitors that are looking for something like an Airbnb are looking for that specifically because they have more room, they have kitchens, they're not bothered with other people being around them. Uh, so, no, I don't foresee the Parker, uh, pulling people from rental homes out in the Galena Territory to then stay at, uh, a large lodging facility. Any other questions?
Yeah, just gonna ask that. Any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Darling Perry at nineteen seventy-four North Blackjack Road, right in the middle of all this. We've got a, well, sides and behind. I object to the request to annex eighteen point two four acres adjoining my property into corporate boundaries of the city of Galena for following reasons. It's a perfect example of urban sprawl. The city, according to the present comprehensive plan, should go to the west and not to the east. Yes, I understand the comprehensive plan is being revised. The access road off Blackjack Road that the developer wants to use is a very steep, narrow gravel road with a cattle guard under it at the bottom. Okay, so they're going to, I just heard tonight, they're going to widen it and pave it. But anyway, there's still a cattle guard, and it's still going to be zoned egg. Cow wander up and down the road, big farm equipment, including semis full of grain and trucks pulling two thousand pound hay bales travel both on the driveway and on the main road all the time. Not to mention lots of motorcycles and regular traffic in the fall. The regular traffic in the fall, a semi blocks the road while wagon loads of corn come down the driveway and haul the corn into a semi, usually at late, and I've seen this, all of it, and it's right beside me. Davis Creek runs under a cement bridge through a culvert, and it's because the creek's on both sides of the road. So there's no room for a turning lane. And during a hard rain, both Blackjack Road and the bottom of the access road flood, and this did happen in July. About fifteen years ago, a driver the name of Hank Gordon managed the farm at the top of the hill was killed in a tractor accident on this road, and I was old at the time. I, he, um, drove up and down this road several times a day, so he was familiar with this road. Now, the developer wants a six hundred-person convention center, or restaurants, cabins, a whiner, and several other things, with the potential of six hundred bus cars coming up and down with people potentially drinking. And unfamiliar with the road. Can't think about that, and the train. I don't care if you submit it or not, there's going to be traffic going up and down both. And yes, I know a shuttle was mentioned, but they are going to use most of them. But what benefit is this to the city, except possibly more tax money? Our occupancy for lodging is less than fifty percent. It's now over here just mentioned in the past five years. And what about the additional traffic at the intersection of Third and Fourth Street and Highland? Sometimes now, traffic is backed up past Happy Joe's. Recent comprehensive plan, present comprehensive plan states that we value the land and our strong agricultural heritage. We want to preserve the natural resources for future generations and preserve the county's rural character and scenic areas. So how does building a mini Disney, Disney world and a cornfield on top of a steep hill that floods at the bottom fit this concept?
All right, thank you, ma'am.
My name's Edward Chine. I'm at nineteen fifty-two North Blackjack Road, immediately adjacent to the proposed development. Me and my nonprofit. First of all, I appreciate your time. I'll keep this as quick as possible. Uh, Mr. Bransky mentioned, uh, the Davis Bridge. I don't know how many times you've gone up and down Blackjack Road and gone over that bridge. But if you're going at speed, listed speed, someone's coming at you. It's a white knuckler, because it's extremely narrow. The other thing is, I remember when the Vincents were milking up there, and they'd have the trucks come up in inclement weather. The milk trucks couldn't make it up that hill. The picture looked like it wasn't that steep, but if you walk out there and walk up that hill, it's actually quite steep. I'm not too worried about trucks getting up the hill. I'm more worried about cars coming down that hill. And Mr. Bransky mentioned that they're going to make improvements to the road, which I would make sense. If they do make improvements to the road, is that going to be asphalt? And if they are, if it is going to be asphalt, and they are coming down that hill, I'm worried about cars coming into that intersection. Not only for me and my family and the other residents that live in the neighborhood from Rice County's coming through there, but also that there's a huge ditch on the other side of that creek. And it's not a little one. It's huge. So here you have, you're up at the top of the hill. It's icy. It's snowing. You're coming down the hill. It's very dangerous. Is, is Miss Perry, Mrs. Perry just mentioned. So these are things. Now, erosion is also mentioned. Uh, erosion control is a constant effort in this area. And over the last two years, we've improved. We've spent over twelve thousand dollars on our farm trying to prevent erosion, which directly then affects the Vincent property. We've, we've been combating it. Uh, there's not much we can do other than build dry dams, bulldozes. It's a constant effort. Whenever we cut down more trees, which we try not to, we have more erosion. So what we do is we try to plant trees. So I'm worried that if there is any more development up on that hill, if any trees are cut, there will be more erosion and more water coming down that hill. And so I oppose the development by True North Quality Homes LLC. Development contains no quality homes, as the company's name suggests. Rather, the plan's itemized one hundred and forty-five guest accommodations squeezed side by side into eighty-five acres. Ninety-six minus the eleven for the great finds. The proposed development is nothing more than a tourist trailer camp on stilts. Even a cursory glance at the many exhibits reflect tightly spaced boxes where the best views are not the rolling hills of Joe Davis County, but rather the windows on neighboring guest cottages. Can any reasonable person believe that wealthy or upscale urban dwellers will travel to the Parker for a weekend's stay to be surrounded by row upon row of tourist cottages? While there, while there's, while there is precious little information presented to predict the profile of the tourist visitors, one can gain some insights into what can be expected by referring to page seven, exhibit G, the developer's exhibit appendix. I directed the attention to what appears to be several parking lots adjacent to identify unidentified buildings. It takes superior eyesight to count the many parking spaces that I can't estimate, but I might say around two hundred. These concentrated parking spaces suggest to me that overnight guests might be encouraged to bring cargo trailers, which could contain adult toys such as water runners, ATVs, side-by-sides, dirt bikes, enrollment vehicles. If I'm not correct, the developer has not made any provisions for containing or otherwise limiting the use of these vehicles. It is my opinion that the proposed development does dramatically and emphatically violate any and all comprehensive plans, which have long been referenced and respect, and respected throughout the county. which have long been referenced and respect, and respected throughout the county in hearings and hearings such as this. Further, the proposed development corrupts, infringes and creates a nuisance to the immediate and surrounding neighborhoods along Blackjack Road. Believe me, if this proposed development was just about walking trails and vineyards, most of us would not be losing sleep or carrying the loss of innumerable cherished values. Another separate and distinct reason for denying the application is the develop, the developer itself. Little is known as about the developer, I don't even think he's here today. But the circumstances surrounding the application demand careful examination of the developer largely because it encompasses several phases covered in unspecified period over several years, as it goes to say, the devil's in the details. It is largely left to the developer to define, prioritize, create, and supervise the implementation of these details. What we do know about the developer is that he will serve to predict whether the changes it causes will improve or at a minimum be compatible within and around the community it has selected for its development. We know that True North Quality Homes is rich, providing ample evidence of it when it paid in rigging errors approximately fifty-five thousand per acre for the seventy-eight point seven nine acres. It emphasized its financial prowess, prowess when when cracks appeared relating to public access to the proposed development and paid the Vincent heirs the same amount of fifty-five thousand per acre for approximately eighteen acres. Further east along Blackjack Road, these purchase prices are in just about everyone's opinion dramatically above market value for unimproved farmland acreage in Jordi's County. Meanwhile, and importantly, these purchase, purchases produce the effect of isolating at least a half dozen personal residents by encompassing them within the proposed development. My knowledge, not any of these homeowners have received or been offered any money for their property by the developer. This dramatic and fundamentally unfair treatment of one's neighbors bodes ill for the future. It is my opinion that the proposed development will constantly clash with the entire Blackjack corridor. At minimum, neighbors should always be considerate with their neighbors. Where appears not to agree with this standard and its application should be denied. Lastly, I would like to point what I consider to be a little known but tremendously pertinent fact, that there are approximately a hundred and forty pending applications for Airbnb licenses in, in the Galena area. Moreover, my understanding that these applications are on hold. If my understanding is correct, it would appear that a hold in the nature of a de facto or not or formal moratorium is in effect. And it seems to me that because questions concerning low income or affordable housing and workforce housing or tourist accommodations are running and complex, would require planning and legislative actions and a moratorium is unwarranted. And if I am correct, the moratorium is in effect or call, why wouldn't True North Quality Homes LLC application be covered by it? Certainly, on its face, it appears applicable and worthwhile. Thus, it is my suggestion that in the event the board or council refuses to reject the application, that a moratorium be placed on it until such time as the Airbnb licenses are taken off hold and resolved at the Galena and Jordi's County, but, exactly, and Chine.
Big guests. Adam Johnson, two eleven Fourth Street. Uh, I just have a couple of things to point out. Uh, we've got the, the staff memorandum here. And again, um, now I've got a lot, lot of history with the zoning board. Uh, I brought along, uh, there we go, the, uh, map amendment from, uh, IPC, uh, power plant for Orlando Valenti. Uh, and when you determine not to, uh, change the, uh, the land use there, uh, he was turned down there in the determination, number one, number one reason. The proposal does not comply with the objectives of the comprehensive plan. The land use plan contained in the comprehensive plan describes the use of the property as parks, wrecks, and green space. Rezoning the property to auto-orient the business will be contrary to the city's efforts to implement comprehensive plan. Number one reason they rejected that. So comprehensive plan does have a, a place in the determination of whether you should be, uh, approving this consideration. Uh, when I did a PUD for Grace Church, the, the administrative, uh, staff summary states explicitly, site plan review indicates compliance with the adopted plan's policies such as the comprehensive plan does not conflict with the official map trail or plans the city. Now, what we got, what we got on this memorandum, we got a paragraph that kind of refers to the comprehensive plan. Proposed site and newly acquired acreage are directly adjacent to one of the city claim as contiguous borough areas. It's not in the contiguous borough area. The proposed, I'm going to say, uh, the, the project is next to and will access a major collective, collective street, and since the creation of the comprehensive plan, new public facilities and RVs have been instructed in the art. All right, so, so he, the zoning administrator is saying that there are, that we're not following the comprehensive plan, he's going around the bush here. He's not going to state it though, he needs to state it here. You gotta be an honest zoning administrator and say, it does not comply with comprehensive plan.
Just be straight up. Don't be calling the administrator dishonest, okay?
All right.
If you want to piss me off.
So, so this is, this comes to the point of, uh, are there adequate public facilities and services? All right, city services include building department, zoning department, historic preservation commission. We've got one man here, one man here doing four jobs at the city. We've got the museum, the new historical museum coming up on Bothillier Street, we've got an addition onto the hospital coming. We've got a city engineer and a building inspector, zoning administrator, gotta cover all of this. Right? No, I, I'm not saying anything against Jonathan, I know he's a hard worker, I know he's an honest man, but he's got four jobs, and this is an extremely, ex, extremely complicated and very dangerous proposal to, to redevelop this part of town. And like a number of people have said, you don't have the information. You cannot determine if it's a public benefit, because you don't have that information. You cannot determine if it's, if it's going to create runoff. We don't have that, we didn't have a traffic study. These are things that something like this, you have to get the developer upfront. We got a guy here spending millions, millions of dollars to develop a site over here that you can't get to. You know, you should have, we, as a city, we need to explain to these people, you know, money can't solve location, location, location. Anybody knows development, three things, location, location, location. Change the zoning at Park Avenue and the highway for a new business there, how's that doing? I don't see it thriving. Can anybody make the greenhouse work? No, you can't get there from here. So when the applicant comes before you and says that he can't even make a left-hand turn onto the highway with his, with his, uh, shuttle bus, he's gonna have to make a right turn. This is what they said. He's gonna have to make a right turn, go up to Bothillier where the left turn lane is three cars. He's gonna have to go down Bothillier, then he's gonna have to take a left onto Park Avenue and get in my way. Now, how's he gonna work that on, on a big weekend? How's he gonna work that on Country Fair Weekend? He's gonna take a right turn, he's gonna go up to Bothillier, he's gonna take a left on Bothillier, he's gonna go down Park Avenue, he's gonna go Park Avenue off to Jackson, he's gonna, Jackson, the bog, it's, he's gonna end up by Louis. And then he's gonna come downtown? Now, we got a hundred, oh, four hundred some odd parking spaces, which is fifty cars a quarter mile. Right, that's two miles of cars coming out, coming out to what we know is a very dangerous intersection. And I just say, I want to hear a little bit better discussion than than people saying. I won't get into it. You know, last time, last time I was here and we went through this, everybody came up here and gave their evidence. You made a motion, there was no discussion. There was no discussion on any item. Uh, city attorney direct, you go directly to the, uh, performance and compliance goals. And pretty much, the chairman answered every one of those. The one that somebody else answered, the chairman disagreed with him, but we didn't go through and answer all these questions looking at the facts. You know? But no, he says, I've been here for sixty-one years and the chairman says tourism is the biggest industry we've ever had. Somebody mentioned Frank Ironsoiler, well, Frank Ironsoiler's biggest goal was to bring tourism to Galena. And that's what built this town, because it wasn't built on anything else. And it's important that we continue to do that, because that's the industry we chose. We didn't choose tourism as the only industry. That's why we have a comprehensive plan, because we're trying to diversify our infrastructure, diversify our economy, diversify the jobs. We can't have, we've already got Wedding Chapel, we already got Turner Hall. I got one on, on the west side of, or on the east side over here now, how's that doing? I don't see a need for destroying this property over here. You want to build a hotel with a hundred and forty rooms? We've got it set up. Go buy the Bartel farm, go buy something where you can already connect to the, in the water, can already connect to the sewer. Why do we have a developer who's coming to town paying way more for property than he should be? Developing a property that's gonna be almost impossible. I mean, you're talking about a sewer system, a hundred and thirty sewer connections, a hundred and fifty sewer connection. It's gonna spider web down that hill through limestone trenches under the river. And you're gonna say, none of that's gonna break, we're not gonna endanger our water by, by opening up sewer lines in the karst on the limestone hill? They just closed down Main Street yesterday for a water main break. I've been working on Main Street, the city couldn't keep track of where the sewer sprint, or where the sprinkler connections were. You know? We can't keep track of what we got here, we got somebody building something even more complicated over there on a site that's gonna be nearly impossible building. Why is he over there? We want somebody to come to Galena and be successful. We want him to tell, we want him to tell, tell them where to go and build where you can be successful. There's a reason we told people not to build over there, and it's, it's the highway. You can't improve that intersection, we know that. You can't improve that piece of property and develop on it properly. He's got a hundred and forty cabins on stilts. That's not innovative. That's because they're cheap and they know that if you're gonna put in concrete, you gotta put in foundations, you're gonna disturb way more property and you're really gonna cause problems. I want you to think about that sewer. House on stilts, that's not innovative. I don't have anybody come to me asking me about the house on stilts. Why is that? What do you do with your water? What do you do with your water? We got, you got all your plumbing underneath that tower and then going to a unprotected sewer connection that has to pass through a zone of pre-stuff. So we got a hundred and thirty possible sewer connections that are gonna break in this development already. Send him where he should be building. Make this guy successful. Why would we send him over here? We need the rooms, you want the rooms? Send him west, where he's supposed to go, because according to our comprehensive plan. Amendments may be appropriate in years following adoption of the plan, particularly when the plan becomes contradictory, emerging in issues, policies, and trends. Amendments are typically minor changes to plan or test, large-scale changes or frequent amendments make the plan lose integrity. To follow the state comprehensive planning law, the city should use the same process to amend the plan that it used when it was initially adopted, regardless of how minor the change or amendment. You don't have the right, nobody has the right to just sit up here and say you got to, you got to change the comprehensive plan without going through the process. Yeah, Jonathan tells you that you can change the zoning, can change the parts of the PUD that are related to zoning, but he doesn't tell you here, again, that you can't change the comprehensive plan. You have to go through the process, you want to change, you want this to happen, you gotta go through the comprehensive zoning plaque, comprehensive plans process. You can't just sit up here and say, it's twenty years old, it doesn't apply. Because I'd like to know when that stops, because I've been bringing people before this zoning board for twenty years, and it's always applied to me.
So David Hannah, eleven oh seven Fourth Street, um, got some handouts there, I also had to show you some stuff on the screen. Hopefully you could follow along. So what you've got there on that handout is just a list of, so.
Thank you.
What you've got there on the handout is just a list of some of the ordinances I refer to. Also, you refer to the number of parts of the application itself, so we'll probably even follow along with what's there. Maybe to start, maybe I can just clarify a couple of things that I'm possibly confused about. You know, the public notice for the meeting indicates this is for a request for an amendment to a planned, you that fellow plan to add eighteen acres. Um, but the zoning administrator's memo says that the eighteen acres would remain zoned as the bulk limited agriculture. The notice regarding the annexation agreement says the eighteen acres will be zoned and unit development and underlying district. So will the eighteen acres remain as limited agriculture or be rezoned to plan unit development?
Will be part of the PUD, that particular parcel will be the main act.
Underlying district of the main act. But it would be rezoned to planned unit development. Okay. So are the existing PUD parcels? So are the existing PUD parcels, will they be rezoned as part of this process?
No.
Okay, so, so it's just the eighteen acres.
Yes, it'll be rezoned.
Okay. So, uh, one fifty-four, three oh one, B one and two outlines the different types of planned unit development. So there's either a district or a site. And the existing rezoning ordinance doesn't specify whether the site was rezoned to the district or site. You know which one that was?
It's not a discussion. You can state your piece. If they have questions, I'll ask.
Okay, so, under a planned unit development district, comprehensive set of development standards are approved that apply to a lot or subdivision. As opposed to a specific site plan. The PUD district also includes standards for perimeter landscaping and buffering. vehicular and pedestrian circulation and other standards as necessary. So that's one fifty-four, three oh one, E one. For a planned unit development site under one fifty-four, three oh one, E two. A detailed site plan showing building footprints, parking areas, and other details is approved, with which all future development must comply. Generally, the approved site plan controls all development on the lot indefinitely. So the, the rezoning ordinance didn't specify which of these things that it was. But if it's a district, there has to be a comprehensive set of development standards. If it's a site, there has to be a detailed site. The one fifty-four, three oh one B indicates that deviations from any of the default standards. Shall be explicitly stated in the zoning, zoning ordinance. One fifty-four, three oh one C says, at the time of zoning a parcel to PUD, the city council shall determine the allowed uses. Which must be consistent with the comprehensive plan. But I can find no statement of standards or deviations or uses or site plan in the rezoning ordinance. So, like, one question I have then is what standards does the amendment seek to amend? Approved preliminary plan and a proposed amendment have a lot of overlap, but also conflicting information. It is one to two of the amendment requests, that's eight changes. But it also appears there are additional changes in the rest of the document. Zoning administrator's memo doesn't clearly list all the changes or how the city will incorporate them into a ordinance to ensure that they're clearly understood in the future. Though, for instance, the amendment mentions the change in floor area ratio for the project in several places. And characterizes this as a community benefit in the long term. According to the amendment request, the same number of buildings and the same amount of building area will be developed on the same parcels of land. Is more than a hundred and twenty buildings greater than what currently exists on the site. The amount of the proposed building development isn't changing. How is a change in the floor area ratio on paper an actual community benefit? Well, let's look at the floor area ratio anyway. Actually, one fifty-four, three oh one D indicates. Non-residential planned unit development intensity shall be established as a maximum floor area ratio. And maximum building size at the time of planned unit development to be zoning approval. And determining the maximum bar in MBS, the zoning board of appeals and the city council shall consider. And there's a list of criteria. Includes the intensity of adjacent development, the demand for development in the vicinity of the proposed PUD. Availability of transportation facilities, including streets, the adequacy of utilities and public services. So what bar in MBS standards were established in the original rezoning approval? And how were those stated in the rezoning ordinance? What far in MBS is the zoning board considering and determining tonight? Is the new bar being established, the three point six we heard earlier tonight? What about the MBS? How are all the relevant factors identified in one fifty-four, three oh one considered making this determination? The city's not quantified or presented information regarding the intensity of adjacent development. And has not presented information about the demand for development in the vicinity of the community. As far as I know, there is no current demand for development near the vicinity. Or about traffic and street issues. There's been a lot of citizen testimony and agreement by city officials that the development will worsen traffic and street issues. But the city's provided no rationale for how traffic and street issues were considered in its determination of foreign MBS. How about the process for amending the preliminary PUD plan? Zoning administrator's memo states, preliminary PUD may be amended through the rezoning process. I'm not sure that's entirely correct. One fifty-four, nine twenty-three F one outlines three situations where uses of standards in PUD ordinance. May be amended by going through the rezoning process to amend the rezoning ordinance. In addition, one fifty-four, nine twenty-three F three outlines how preliminary development plan is amended. This must also be followed. Amendment in front of you doesn't fit the definitions of a minor or major amendment given in subsections A and B. So subsection C applies, which states. All other amendments to the preliminary development plan shall be reviewed by the zoning board of appeals and decided by the city council. Using the same process and criteria we use for preliminary plan approval, review and approval. The previous testimony has shown that the criteria required by one fifty-four, nine twenty-three for approval of the preliminary PUD plan. Were not considered by the zoning board or the city council in their deliberations. And these criteria and the overall process are also not mentioned in the zoning administrator's memo for this member. Amendment talks about having a default zoning of the added eighteen acres as limited agriculture. But also shows that one of the purposes of the eighteen acres is to develop a road system to service a commercial resort. Is it that a commercial reuse, not an agricultural use on the eighteen acres? Nowhere in the limited ag description in zoning ordinance does it say that the ag district is intended for the development of road infrastructure. Or a new commercial development. This kind of commercial development is not consistent with the highly rural community character of the limited agricultural zoning district. If eighteen acres of the underlying, the eighteen acre says the underlying zoning district of agricultural. But it's being rezoned to planned unit development. What are the changes under default agricultural standards that are being created? And the rezoning ordinance that make it have to be a PUD? Don't see mention of any new standards for the eighteen acres of the amendment. Only a desire to have signage by right rather than by special use permit. What's the rationale for why PUD is necessary for this parcel when there are no new standards? For community benefits established for the parcel, just more rights to develop. Another thing that's unclear in the original plan and the amendment of the rings near Davis Creek. In the original preliminary plan, these are described as existing structures. With no mention of residential use, which is not permitted in a planned commercial district. Now, in the maps in the amendment, one of the buildings is described as an existing residence. Original PUD approval never mentioned any residential use. Is this a non-conforming use? What about the existing maintenance building that's shown in phase one B? That turns into an expanded maintenance building in phase three of the PUD development. Other than the word maintenance, there's no explanation of use of this building in the amendment. Since the expansion is shown as part of the phase three plan, it's clearly a part of a commercial PUD project and not an unchanged existing use. So is this the only maintenance building to service the resort? Grounds care, equipment and pesticide storage for the vineyards, service of cabins and restaurants and other facets of the resort. Making for a very busy hub of activity immediately adjacent to a residential area. The approved PUD maps also show the maintenance, the approved PUD maps show maintenance building near the winery. But the only maintenance building shown in the amendment maps is this expanded maintenance building near Davis Creek. Utility map does not show any sewer infrastructure to this building. Even though the amendment claims the project will be served by city water and sewer. Was the zoning board considered the impact of these structures' uses within the context of the entire community? These structures and uses are more impacts to joining landowners that have not been considered or addressed. No information has been provided about how they fit into the project. Why was the original PUD approved without addressing non-conforming uses within PUD? Are there other non-conforming uses that are not addressed in the preliminary plan or the amendment? How are we to know? See, you've heard many times that the proposal is not in accordance with the comprehensive plan. Heard a lot of talk about that. But one of the key parts of the comprehensive plan is the land use map. Which clearly shows where different types of uses are meant to be located, not just any use is appropriate in any place. Land use map is a product of much deliberation by the planning commission in the community. It does not identify this area for development. Landowners rely on the comprehensive plan and the land use map to know the future of their properties in the neighborhood. Why are the proposed resort properties should also been able to look at the map and know that a large commercial resort development is not appropriate for this area? And the city could have done the same. If you compare the land use map, uh, in the comprehensive plan to the map on page eight of the amendment. You'll see that the amendment map is clearly not consistent with the land use map in the comprehensive plan. It completely alters the character of this area of the city. One fifty-four, four oh six, D seven states that all intensive agricultural land uses are prohibited in the city. This issue was not addressed by the city in the previous approval. The vineyard requires ongoing frequent pesticide use, which raises brown and surface water concerns, especially given that the clean water set plan. Speaks to the vulnerability of the upper to contamination. Allowing this intensive agricultural use within the city will subject neighbors and other city residents to these impacts. Amendment would expand the vineyards and increase these impacts. How is the city justified allowing this intensive agricultural land use? Winery is not clearly described in this preliminary plan nor in the amendment. Although in previous testimony, the applicant did mention that the winery structure was used for processing grapes and wine. One fifty-four, four oh six G, this alcoholic beverage producers are heavy industrial land use. Was this heavy industrial land use approved in a preliminary plan? As the city assessed, whether the city wastewater treatment plan is suitable for this kind of industrial discharge. Item number two on page nine of the amendment talks about whether the existing tax for zoning designation was an error at the time of adoption. I believe the PUD zoning designation was created in error. Including that the rezoning ordinance does not contain elements required by the city codes. The approval criteria required by one fifty-four, nine twenty-three are considered by the zoning board or the city council. Item number three on page ten, whether there has been a change in the character of the area. The amendment mentions that Gateway Park and Horshum Mount have been developed in the area and claims the project is consistent with the character of the area. Although the Gateway Park and Horshum Mount are protected from commercial development. Which is the opposite of what is proposed for Parker, which is to turn open land into commercial development. Parker is not in character with those parks. And in terms of our residential neighborhood, its character has been the same for decades. And again, a large commercial development is not in character with the area. Community character is defined in the zoning ordinance as the impression which an area makes in regard to the type, intensity, density, quality, appearance, and age of development. Application asserts that the sewage treatment plant has changed the character of the area. The sewage plant did nothing to change the impression our neighborhood makes in regard to type, intensity, density, quality, appearance, and age of development. Item number four on page ten, many of us have provided testimony that the proposed development is not compatible with this surrounding area. Amendment seems to agree with this, saying that, quote, added acreage is consistent with the rural and agricultural nature of the area, end quote. Based on the limited agricultural designation. This means that the rest of the project, which contains extensive commercial building, roadway, and other development. Then not consistent with the rural agricultural nature of the area. Item number four also says the proposed amendment is compatible with the surrounding area because the changes increase open space, reduce total paved area. And reduce the project floor area ratio. But it's a little disingenuous to say that in the real world, we're gonna develop the same amount of stuff on the same parcels. We have a different bar number on paper, but therefore it's compatible with this surrounding area. But has the city identified that the open space, paved area, and far is for the sets around the area in order to actually make comparison? Adding some land to the far edge of the PUD doesn't affect how the developed area impacts immediately. Item number four on page ten, I'd like to mention the remainder of the criteria from the rezoning ordinance, which I won't read. The one fifty-four, nine twenty-three. But the development would contribute to dangerous traffic patterns and congestion, significant impacts to streets and public health safety welfare. Amendment shows an increase in the number of parking spaces for the community, so even more traffic on streets if expected. The development would generate numerous environmental impacts, steep slopes, woodlands, wildlife, noise and light pollution. Form water runoff and so on. You've heard about this in other testimony, these impacts. Utility map on page eleven clearly indicates that the project will make the infrastructure better in this area of town. Will only service the PUD property. No water or sewer will be made available to any other part of the community. Map clearly shows that the city sewer service will also not be available to the existing residents or the expanded maintenance building. The city services won't even be available for whole buildings on the PUD property. Also, the depth of utilities is very deep, in some areas sewer lines of over thirty feet deep. Which will make it very expensive for the city to address future problems and maintenance. As the city analyzes these issues to understand these potential costs. It's not your average infrastructure, and even if the developer pays for the initial installation, that doesn't mean there's a significant financial liability we consider. City hasn't presented any cost benefit analysis for this. This is just one issue related to the city's future infrastructure obligations. And there's been no analysis presented of other long-term state costs related to emergency services. Item number seven on page eleven says there's a need in the community for the proposal provides no rationale for this. Others have talked about this relative, uh, the tax base. No information around how that will actually work. Or the increased tax base versus the loss in tax revenues from existing businesses that will be impacted or the cost of infrastructure. Item number seven on page eleven also says there will be a reduction in your paved areas by twenty-eight thousand square feet. On page six, item one C says the paved roadway and parking surface area decreases by thirty-two thousand square feet. Are these different things? Which is the right number? How do we know if the rest of the information in the application is accurate? Has the city done an independent review to sure, ensure the submitted information is accurate? Should you be recommending something that contains inconsistencies or errors? Array on page twelve was purported community benefits. Many of these seem to be saying that the amendment is not as bad as the original PUD, so therefore that's a community benefit. But the approved PUD did not demonstrate community benefit, and the amendment still doesn't. City information shows that more than twelve acre of the wind line will be cleared from the project. How is that protection and preservation of natural resources? How was that a community benefit? Adding a mile of trails for resort guests is not a community benefit. Application repeatedly talks about an increase in open space, but takes a property that currently has a handful of buildings. Adds more than a hundred buildings, plus rows, parking for over four hundred vehicles and other development. The real world, that's a decrease in open space, not an increase. Even if you believe some of these things are benefits, how are they insured or required by the zoning ordinance? This does not mention any of that at all. Number nine on page thirteen, this purported amenities. However, it's not a community benefit to create a resort that increases traffic in part. They showed us as a menu. The reality is that the shuttle will not address those traffic. I don't see how adding more restaurants can be considered a community benefit based on the criteria of the zoning ordinance. And again, even if you pretended that these things were amenities, how are they insured or required by the rezoning ordinance? This is not much. Mertan on page fourteen says that circulation and access will be adequate on a private resort property. But ignores all the traffic impacts to surrounding streets, neighbors, and community. Even the city council has agreed that the traffic will be a significant problem. As far as I know, nothing has been done to address or even further understand the issue. Number eleven on page fifteen says the amendment will meet the buffer yard requirements for the type three buffer yard for moving residential. Per tonight, that's not required in some places because of that intervening city right of way. However, the project includes outdoor commercial entertainment. And in one fifty-four, four oh five D, outdoor commercial entertainment requires a type four buffer yard with residential selling property. The section further requires that activity areas shall not be visible from any residential zone. I don't see any determination in the PUD plans or the city review as to whether the commercial outdoor entertainment activity areas are visible from residential zone property. Plans do show the buildings with outdoor entertainment near the upper ridge line of property, which is visible from many places. In addition, if the winery is a heavy industrial use for production of alcohol beverages. One fifty-four, four oh six G requires a type four buffer yard along all borders of the property, providing properties that are not zoned as the industrial. So what are the actual buffer yard requirements? And how does the amendment demonstrate conformance with the requirements? Item number thirteen on page sixteen, that as well anticipated basing for the project is described here, per phase components and timing of phase. This, of course, raises the question of whether the anticipated basing actually means anything at all. Or where the amendment seeks to justify any phasing that the developer chooses regardless of what's shown in the amendment. Item number thirteen goes on to say furthermore, that Kalina zoning ordinance, one fifty-four, nine twenty-three F three A, states that the zoning administrator can approve minor amendments. However, this is not what one fifty-four, nine twenty-three F three A states. What it actually says is zoning administrator may approve following amendments for individual lots within the area covered by preliminary. A lot is defined by the zoning ordinance as a parcel plan that meets the following. One, it's undivided by a street or private road. Two, is occupied by or designated to be developed for one building for potential use. Clearly, what the amendment described as parcels that may be combined in the future does not meet this definition. Because the area of the combined parcels is divided by private roads and is designated to be developed for more than one building. The portion of the zoning ordinance that provides for minor amendments in a preliminary P U D by the zoning administrator was meant for small individual lots in a large development, not for the entire development. Because the P U D parcels do not meet the standards in the ordinance that provides for the zoning administrator through minor amendments. Amendments to the preliminary P U D fall under one fifty-four, nine twenty-three F three C, which states all other amendments to the preliminary development plan use the same process and criteria used for preliminary planning. Therefore, the statements in item number thirteen of the amendment do not conform to the. Number seventeen on page twenty-one says the amendment will comply with the purposes and intensive ordinance. In a lot of ways, this doesn't apply, but if you just look at the overall purpose of the zoning code in one fifty-four, zero, zero, five, it mentions things like protecting and preserving the character, value, and stability of the city in adjacent areas, prohibiting uses and buildings incompatible with zoning districts, limiting congestion of public streets and protecting public health, safety, and welfare, eliminating nonconforming uses, ensuring the continuation of the city's historical character, identity, diversity, and authenticity, attaining the objectives and accomplishments of the plan. This development amendment does not serve those purposes. There's no natural resource protection plan required by one fifty-four, five, three. Maps in the preliminary plan and amendment don't eliminate all the required features. Claim that natural resources will be undisturbed, but then show maps of development features disturbing natural resources. For instance, the amendment indicates that a hundred percent of shore buffers will be protected. The shore buffers are not shown on the able project maps, and project maps do show development features in areas which are. The city's website has a standard form request for zoning map amendments. The form includes a section, notice to applicants, where states an amendment to the zoning map may be granted only when the public interest will be served by the change. Enactment of an amendment cannot be based simply on the benefit which would accrue to an individual or group of individuals as a result of the change. Rather, amendment must be in harmony with the goals and objectives of comprehensive planning for the. Make impartial and consistent decisions in map amendment cases. The zoning board considers the following checklist of specific factors related to the request. There's then a list of seventeen questions. Are these questions then considered by the zoning board? Were they considered for review? I'll just answer a few of them. Zoning change to plan unit development is contrary to the general welfare of the community. It's contrary to the established land use pattern. It creates an isolated, under the district, inconsistent with the existing uses, contributes to dangerous traffic patterns and congestion, adversely influences living conditions in the vicinity, adversely affects property values in the vicinity, does not combat economic segregation, and it does not comply with the city's name just now. Heard a lot tonight, couldn't go through everything. I hope this is enough to be clear that the amendment doesn't demonstrate and should not be recommended for approval. Otherwise, you have a lot to consider tonight. It's been a long night. It's a complex proposal. A lot of these.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. You're going to be the last one. You're going to get hit with it, so apologies upfront. So I've heard all my folks say this is going to adversely impact our values, other than someone talking to a realtor. Any business I've ever been involved in, if I'm spending forty million dollars, eighty million dollars, a hundred million dollars to build something, generally, the property values go up around it. What say you about that?
Well, the only thing I'd say about that is the information. That Wendy mentioned about, you know, declines in values during the period of construction.
During the period of construction. Construction, different story. Once it's complete, a whole nother story, correct?
Maybe. I don't think that we know what the values will be.
Well, it's been, it's been stated that the developers by several people that they pay a very inflated price per acre for the land. So is that not causing the value of the land out there to increase?
I'm not an appraiser, but I know that that's a big business with a lot that we want to. So I can't say for sure, but you know, what the developer is doing and what he's paying for land is different than what residents want. We treat our properties. I'm not sure that that's a fair comparison to talk about allowing commercial development by someone without making limits to what they can pay compared to regular people.
But it's fair to say that we can actually say what the values of homes are going to be when this is completed, whether they're going to be higher than what they are now or they're going to be less. Nobody can actually say that, right?
I don't know. I don't know that.
I mean, because I can't. I don't know what the values of properties you're going to do, so to put that out there isn't an actual. Well, wouldn't but, well, I'll answer. I'll see it every morning when I walk out in front of my house on South Street. I will see her. I just, I'm just looking for a fact is all I'm looking for, Wendy. That's why I am.
I think you stated during that fact, it was during construction, correct?
Which is, let's not forget that construction and phasing is intended to last possibly for as long.
As someone who's already been living with construction next to me for three years, and I've got another three years, I understand your pain, but it's not decreasing my property value.
Right, but if.
That's a fact.
No, the zoning ordinance doesn't ask. It asks about, or the self actors actually asks about. It's not talking about ten years down the road or indefinite. It's asking if it has an impact, and the answer is it does. So if I need to sell my property next five. Okay. I lose. So that's really, there's not a timeframe.
Thank you. Okay. I mean, it could, there could be a fact, Wendy, but nobody can say for sure. That's all I was asking this gentleman here. Thank you, Wendy. All right. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak? That's it. Uh, the applicant has the right to rebut. So if you want to come forward.
You have the right to ask questions after that of her. Whoever, the applicant.
After the rebut, yes.
Thank you.
So there were a lot of.
You want to just state your name?
Oh, sorry. Name again. Sandra Lawrence. Sandy Evans again. I've already been on here once. You guys know where I live already. So there have been a lot of concerns, and we're not going to go point by point because there's not time, but we do want to speak to some of the themes, so that's what we're going to try to do. And the first, the first theme I would say is that although we appreciate concerns surrounding all the issues mentioned, since there is no change from the approved preliminary P U D, what was approved, we're going to focus on, we're going to focus our response on issues that pertain to the amendment. That's what we're going to focus on. And we've already shown how the amendment meets the seven approval criteria. And if the amendment is not approved, the already approved preliminary P U D plan remains in force. So I will touch on a couple of things and then on topics that are specific to different team members. They'll respond to those topics, and you can ask us questions as you wish in those topic areas. We'll try to cross to them. Organize the bit. So the first thing I will just mention on occupancy in general, there has been no change in the number of units, so the question isn't remained to be amended in terms of occupancy levels. That was in the approved P U D, preliminary P U D. Um, later labor shortage, I can speak to directly. We have other properties and it's a nationwide issue. And we've found success by working with international students, J one students they are. And we use them at other properties and we provide housing for them ourselves. And so we take care of the housing and the students, and we found that to be a successful labor supplemental strategy as we do. As far as vineyard uses of the property, planning vineyards is an improved use for limited agricultural zoning. In fact, as cultivation is permitted use in all of the industrial zoning districts, and there are already existing successful wineries located in the Kalina area, Lena Sellers, Rocky Waters, Mass Bog Ridge. I'm going to turn it over to Andy to talk about issues that he has the knowledge base for, but before I do that, I guess I would ask you, do you all have any questions with me directly?
I do. I've got a few questions for you, and thank you for coming back up. The first question I've got, we've heard a lot of conversation this evening from many individuals with respect to the existing residents and with respect to the expanded maintenance building. Obviously, these aren't detailed plans because this is preliminary. But just to put, answer the questions, can you explain those two items, please, to us just a little bit more?
So I'm going to have Jim explain it.
Jim can do that.
And he is more familiar with the details of.
That, that's fine. Thank you.
Do you want to explain it now, Jim? And you can stay there too, in case there's another question you would, just to answer the question.
Okay, so with respect to the residents, that was meant to just be like a caretaker's residence for somebody probably who's living on the side. There's no other use for that. The, we, we originally had a maintenance building on the east side of the property when the entrance was off a blackjack and that route that went up through the woods. But now that the entrance is coming in from the west, I'm sorry, from the east, that maintenance building was misplaced. It was not in the right spot. So we already had a small maintenance building down and on the rigged benches, we call it. And so we would just probably be using it for storage of, you know, maintenance equipment, lawnmowers and things like that.
Next question is for Sandy. Again, you see, you gotta, you gotta, you're going to get your exercise here. Oh, yes. So with respect to the eighteen point two four acres, I know you are asking to bring that into the P U D, but leave it limited agriculture. And that was a question asked by a couple of individuals, and I think we would like to understand the reasoning for bringing it in. Can you explain that, please?
So, um, the reasoning for bringing it in was the change in the entry rate because it's, it's an improved entryway for the development, so that's why we chose to bring it in. Um, as we were working with the city in terms of understanding what does this mean? Yeah, ordinance, right? How do we bring this in? As mentioned, it doesn't perfectly apply anywhere, so we went with the default of assuming it's an amendment and amended to the existing P U D. So that was because it didn't fit perfectly in terms of a major or minor. We said, let's just be safe and let's do an amendment and go through this process with a public hearing, so that's what we did.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Are you guys done?
Andy was going to come up and speak to some of the things specific to the engineering side.
Any reader? Any address? Just going to touch on a few, a few things. Regarding the question related to the final design details, as you mentioned, these will be provided in the final design phase. We're not required in preliminary P U D amendment phase. We provided the required materials for the preliminary P U Ds now. And we're not required to provide the final design phase information at this stage, but we will provide additional detail as required during the final design. That includes the analysis required by all the regulatory agencies. As we go through final P U D approval, approval of all the local and state agencies, those specific details get designed and hashed out and presented for approval. Regarding the runoff questions that were asked earlier, I'll go back and kind of re emphasize what we talked about. Previously, the proposed project is going to incorporate small local B and Bs at the, at the upper portions of the project. And that's the intent of that is to reduce that runoff going down the hill. Rain gardens, bio swales, infiltration measures. Anything that is not accommodated by those small B and Bs will, will be collected, treated, and detained in larger B and Bs that were originally planned, but again, just to reiterate, the, uh, the final stormwater design will not increase the discharge to adjacent properties. It'll need all local and regional design requirements and the last portion that I was going to talk about, there was many comments brought up about different permitting requirements and not having those permits, and you wouldn't have those permits at this stage in the preliminary. That's part of the next stage of going through. Original application reviewed the permitting process, including endangered species, I G I, I D N R. All of those applications will be submitted for review and approval as the final design, design plans are developed. We wouldn't submit or approval until we had those design details as part of the. There's a lot of, a lot of stuff out there, but those are the three main developments. If there's questions.
Any questions, guys?
Andrew, I've got one question for you. I figured you were the right guy here, so I'm going to ask you of this one. You know, a lot of discussions come up specifically now that this eighteen acres, we're looking at changing the entrance and exit to the, the area. Have, has the owner developer thought about doing a traffic analysis? Oh, Jim is going to comment on that. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, one real quick question. Maybe you're not the one to answer because I know you don't work for the city, but currently there was some people concerned about the sewer going across the river. I assume that would be an under, under the river bore, and would that be very similar to probably what east side sewage now is currently going under the river?
You're getting your exercise, aren't you?
With respect to traffic, so the, there is, there is no formal requirement for the traffic study now that the county and or the city requested one, then obviously we will do it. And as we move into the next phase, that would be a logical place that something like that might be best, but I will say no, the council did talk about traffic. And so did the board here and it was on the February ninth meeting that your person Rosenthal discussed the seedy value of the traffic on blackjack with respect to Chestnut. Chestnut has its heaviest traffic in the winter time. And this is daily traffic and when people are in and out. Whereas our, our heavier traffic would be on the seasonal, so it would be mostly in the, in the summertime. Also, on February twenty-eighth, all the person Han agreed that traffic would be increased, but increased demands would not be any worse in a busy weekend at Chestnut. And the traffic would not be constant all day long, but I think. But I think at that point, all the persons, a keeper and meeting agreed with that statement. The, the, during the, the approval process for the council, they also consider. The existing parking issues in downtown Galena. This included consideration of our planned mitigation strategy, which is to keep our visitor cars on the property. They're providing a regular shuttle bus and allowing people to walk, of course. The reason we're running our shuttle bus up, make a right-hand turn. About twenty is so that when it makes the left-hand turn down the filier, it can drop people off easily at the New History Museum. And also at the Grant Hall. One last point about traffic. The, I think it's important to note that fried green tomatoes is no longer. Out in the country where it once was. And you talked to Fred Bonnet about that. And Fred said that on a typical busy Saturday, he would serve approximately four hundred people. And he assumed between two and three people per vehicle. That was about a hundred and sixty vehicles or about three hundred and twenty trips. On a Saturday night between four and ten. This is about an average of fifty-three vehicles per hour. And those trips no longer exist.
No, you answered it. Thanks.
Hi, I am Beth Baransky, ten fifteen South Bench Street. I wanted to touch on a couple of things. Comprehensive plan has come up a lot in the comments that were made. And I just, it, it needs to be really understood that the proposed land use plan for the area where this project is going to be located. Was not designated as a green area. It was not shown. In the proposed land use map, every square bit of the mile and a half around the city has been not, has not been designated for use. Not because no use is ever envisioned in these areas, but simply that. Where they, in the plan, narrated that there would be green space areas, they designated those green space areas on the plan. When they said that there should be, the city should consider annexing the areas bounded on three sides by the city. They meant, look at the map, look at the areas where there is bonded on three sides because you can force annexation there. You should consider bringing those in, those are areas that are benefiting from cities, but not paying taxes in the city. And you should consider bringing them in. Those were the discussions that took place when that was being formed. I fully believe in the comprehensive plan. I was the development director when the first plan was adopted. I had a treaty development consulting firm. We developed the county's comprehensive plan in nineteen ninety-nine. I worked with the city and with the other municipalities on the contiguous home areas. I know what they were meant to be. It was so that the county, if they were going to approve something in those areas. They would require that it be put on city water and sewer. Was a very specific thing and none of these things are locked in place. I, I say that, I, I mean, I've usually been planning a lot. And even in the comprehensive plan, I just, just to reiterate kind of what I said, but from the plan. It says, in talking about the goals and objectives and the actions. It should be emphasized that these goals, objectives and action statements are not cast in concrete. While the city's planning commission has developed these goals, objectives and action statements based on the best information available. And the needs of the city at a point in time, changing needs and desires within the city or changes in local population or economy. Meaning that these goals, objectives and action statements will need to be reevaluated. This plan must be flexible enough to respond to changing needs and conditions while still providing a strong guiding mechanism for future development. There was talk of the change of the character of the area. You have very specific criteria on which to base an approval decision. And the second one says. Whether there has been a change of character in the area or throughout the city. And then it specified what it's talking about. Due to installation of public facilities, other zone changes, new growth trends, deterioration, development, transitions, et cetera. Citing the changes in the public facilities development and what that means to areas that can be developed easily is directly pertinent to this property. Other zone changes at the time the approved, um, preliminary PUD plan is a significant change. I also want to touch on some of the water issues and going back to the planning thing. I've been very involved in the county's water resource management plan, which I think was recited. And the Galeno watershed based plan as well. There've been a lot of concerns expressed in various settings about the Parker project being located on Karst and about the threat of water contamination and flooding. For over a decade, I've been working within a process of shared learning about our local hydrogeology. Through rigorous community engagement, we came up with questions about our geology and our water resources. And then worked with scientists to design and conduct research projects to help us answer questions. This research has been peer reviewed and published. This research relates to and directly informs the Parker project's design. We do live in a karst area, so it's important to be aware of the nature of our geology relative to building. Our carbonate bedrock is generally a sound base for construction. All of Joe Davis County is built on karst and the Parker project will be no different in that regard. I would suggest that the greater concern with karst in our area is water quality, both surface water and groundwater. Surface water and groundwater are closely integrated in karst areas. Research suggests the benefit of, of development being on city sewer to prevent septic effluent contamination. Of both groundwater and surface water resources is extremely important that the Parker will be served by city sewer. Stormwater management is critical for effective water resource management in our area. And the design of the Parker project affords many opportunities for green infrastructure amenities. Stormwater management will continue to be an important pillar of the project as final designs are created for each mix. And it's during the final design phase that we'll see those details and be able to clearly understand. But it's, it's built into the preliminary plan what our intent is and it will, and it's required by our ordinances. But our stormwater ordinance states that no development shall cause downstream property owners, watercourses, channels or conduits. Through street received stormwater runoff from proposed developments at a higher P P O rate. And would have resulted from same storm event occurred, occurring over the site of the proposed development.
Yes. I have two questions. First one. I've been trying to look at, you know, the original plan and the new plan. Is any part of the already approved portion, was any part of that? In the growth area?
With that in the continuous growth area, in the annexation area that's shown, there is, but really the point of that is that. It isn't about parcels. So the continuous growth areas that were identified in two thousand and seven are shown immediately adjacent. They're not on that plan, but in the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, it's hard to see it in here, though.
Yes, it's immediately adjacent, those areas identified in two thousand.
So it is immediate.
Yes, but the key point is that those are not prescriptive per se, you know, indicative.
Understand. The next question I've got, based on what you just mentioned here, Beth. And, you know, thank you Wendy for the pictures too that you showed as a runoff. Is it possible with, with what's being done here and, you know, all the different things that are being done? That it could actually help some of this runoff or? Okay.
Yes. Because there, uh, there cannot be runoff of it and you have to meet certain standards. And that area is sort of unattended right now, I would say. You, you see erosion coming off the hill by the entry. If you drive by and look at that, you'll see these big lots coming down the side. We're gonna put in practices, planting prairie is gonna take a lot of that moisture. And the whole intent is to hold the raindrop right where it falls, as close to where it falls as you can. Prairie is gonna absorb a lot and then accepting that there may still be, there'll be some other practices that are incorporated. And that will all be part of the final design that's presented.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
He has an interjector. I'd like, I'd like my rebuttal.
Right.
Well, hold on. I think. We're gonna let everybody rebut or we're gonna just let one like we did last time? I think Wendy, didn't you speak last time on the rebuttal?
Um, yes, and I would like to do so again.
Okay, that's fine. Anybody who wants to speak to rebut.
I'd, I'd like to make a motion. If we're gonna let everyone speak. We need a fifteen minute break at some point here. Okay.
Okay, I just.
More hours.
I just have a few.
Well, she'd just be rebubbling what was said.
Okay.
Just now, so. Go ahead, Wendy. Just state your.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your opportunity. Wendy Clark, eleven oh seven Fourth Street. So a few things to point out. Um, yes, tonight focuses on the amendment because the preliminary PUD is already approved. But remember that the application before you includes certain things that it changes that are written in. That approved preliminary PUD. It changes the phasing, it deals with the maintenance building and some other things that are identified in there. So some of the discussion that you heard tonight, just remember that it is relevant because it does affect that entire PUD as well in many places. There were some suggestions about dealing with potential labor shortages and housing. And they gave an example of what happens at one of the other resorts. But again, we're talking about approving specifically what is or isn't going to happen here by creating a new development district. Maybe this isn't that relevant of a, of an issue, but suggesting example that occurs elsewhere doesn't really inform what we're deciding here tonight. I mean, if they do that, it would be great, but. There was mention of vineyards and how they're appropriate in this area. And there are a number of vineyards. That's true, that's true. But this one would be within the city limits. And that's different because within city limits, different rules apply. Even though it functions as agriculture out there, we have ordinances and things that these have to apply in. To in the city. And so that, that it's just, that's just a requirement. And that makes it different from Mossback Ridge and all the other ones. There was some discussion about the maintenance building and I appreciate that Jim provided a little bit of clarification on that. But again, Dave raised some questions about performance with the ordinances. Because again, when you develop a new zoning district, you have to say exactly what's gonna be in it, what's a variance, what's allowed, what's not. And the point is that none of that is in there in the application right now with which to decide whether or not. This should happen and size for one thing is, is a concern there. So again, those are things that are just requirements to be laid out per the zoning ordinances. Bringing in limited agriculture to the PUD, I guess that there's sort of this kind of hybrid thing going on and uncertainty about how to deal with that. But we need to remember that creating a PUD required, and unfortunately it didn't in the preliminary PUD. It required showing community benefit. And similarly, amending a PUD or adding a new PUD part needs to show community benefit. As is laid out throughout the application, as I noted incorrectly on this leading link. But again, so it's, it's fine that that's how they added it, but part of that requirement is to benefit, which was not demonstrated. A couple of other little things I wanted to clarify, I really appreciate. Mister Reader's information about the small local BNP's. I, when I was mentioning about the permit requirements, however. I was mainly referring to a requirement in the ordinance for the pre-application conference. That all the permit requirements need to be laid out for the development beforehand, before things get started. And the reason for that is so that you make sure that everything that needs to be permitted. All the approvals that need to happen are all listed and none get forgotten. That's something that the burden should be on the city to make sure that that happens. I am quite certain that my son is in the process of becoming an engineer, so I understand the thoroughness of engineers. And so I have no doubt whatsoever that the list that Mister Reader had is comprehensive for the parts of the proposal that he's in charge of. But the city needs to identify whether there are any other additional permit requirements or things that, just to make sure they don't get missed. To clarify about the sewer issue, really, I don't think most of us are that concerned about it going under the river. Because those of us who live on the east side understand that while we flush, that's where it goes already and it works and that's really excellent. But it's really more about the complex infrastructure that would be added and inefficiency of, again, according to the requirements that are in the zoning ordinances for review of rezoning. About the complexity and inefficiency of adding all this additional infrastructure, particularly if it has to be in thirty-foot deep trenches. Because we all know plumbing breaks, right? I mean, it just does. It's just how it works. And so it's just gonna be inefficient and expensive to address. That's really the concern. The information about the traffic is, is concerning. The statements of opinion and even to some extent experienced by the city council members. About the seasonality of traffic in comparison to Chestnut does not substitute for an actual fact-based numbers, numbers study. And anyone who has driven through there during the summertime, and everybody has. Knows that if the parker's gonna be busy in the summertime, it's gonna make a really bad situation worse with the Highway twenty-fourth Street. And Third Street intersection. I walk on Rise and Third Street. And I've literally had to dive out of the way occasionally because of vehicles that shoot off of Black Jack trying to get around the traffic congestion at Fourth and Black Jack. And they fly down Rise and Third, which don't have sidewalks. So increasing traffic is likely to increase the amount of that that happens and create risk. So what we need is not, as much as I appreciate that some folks and I, I, you know, go back and went to Chestnut too. And, you know, I understand that traffic, but it's not the same as having a numbers-based study. I did contact, I got last spring and they gave me some information, which I don't have at hand tonight. But the two intersections, the Fourth Street and the Third Street intersections are somewhere in the ballpark of like six to nine thousand vehicles a day. Average traffic and, and that's, someone asked earlier about capacity. I don't know that they've established capacity. I think that would be part of the purpose of the study is to figure that out. But they definitely, as Mister Bolo said, have identified that as a critical intersection. That has virtually no options for, for fixing it or addressing it because it's bounded on four sides by historic properties and by other features. So that's an issue that still remains unaddressed. The information about Fred Bonnet about fried green tomatoes, that was, that was a number of years ago. I can't remember how long ago that business closed and came into town. But since then, our visitor numbers have continued to go up. And again, Jim Bolo gave some numbers about the number of residences out there in Rice Township. And the number of parcels that may still be developed for residents out there that are already kind of on the slate to be built. So it's not clear, again, doing current studies with current numbers would be really helpful to understanding scope of the problem. Um, I too work in planning. I've worked in planning for the last twenty-five years. I didn't work on the comprehensive plan. I did recently work on a major plan for about three million acres in central Montana, which is different. But what I understand is that there is intent in building a plan and then there is implementation. And the comprehensive plan becomes what it is when it's implemented. And again, you can't get around the requirement that the ordinance would say that any. You rezoning, et cetera, all of this has to meet the goals of the comprehensive plan. It doesn't say exactly how to meet them. There's certainly flexibility in interpreting whether something actually complies or not. But it all actually needs to be very specifically addressed. The change of character that was mentioned, public facilities are one of the things that can change the character of an area. But since those public facilities don't currently extend there and several of the houses wouldn't even have them. We can't argue that the existence of the wastewater treatment plant has really done much to change the character of that area. It does maybe make it possible to build a resort there. It also makes it possible to provide plumbing to the Webster's, but it doesn't. So again, that's kind of, you know, not necessarily the right way to look at that. I'm just looking through my quick notes here. I think that we agree that having a sewer that goes out is better than septic on a limestone karst. There, I don't remember what the place was up on Year Street where they found it. Waste was just disappearing into the hill, which is a little scary. That's what happens with septic. However, having either is best when you have that kind of a vulnerable landscape. Again, regarding stormwater management, that's an area that I'm still learning to understand. I do appreciate that design can't be done until the final stage. However, again, there needs to be something, the ordinances require showing that in order to develop this district, it has to demonstrate. Show how it conforms with the stormwater ordinances. And so that might mean that this just isn't ready to be approved until a final stage. Which is actually, in the handout that I gave you, there is the example where I showed. Oh, the approved O D P versus not. Lower on that page, there was a clip of an ordinance that also talks. oh, the approved ODP versus not. Lower on that page, there was a clip of an ordinance that also talks about that, or somewhere in those anyway. It talks about how you can wait if you don't have enough detail to approve a district and ordinance until you've seen the final plan. So that is one option. That gets down into the weeds of things I don't know a whole lot about. But I'm not sure how you demonstrate that you've conformed with the ordinance for stormwater management without having something more than what we see here. Again, saying that a development is immediately adjacent to a contiguous growth area, it's still not in it. And there's a road on one side between the development area and one of those contiguous growth areas, which is identified as residential, not commercial, and then another residential one that's across the river. So they're adjacent, but there are intervening parcels of, or pieces of land in there. And again, the, the fact that those pieces of land weren't identified as anything, if they were appropriate for growth, the city and the county at the time would have identified them as such. Yes, plans can change, but as we've heard, they have to change through the same process by which they were created, and that hasn't happened. So for good, bad, or ugly, you have to conform to the existing comprehensive plan regardless. The last thing I was gonna say is that, yes, the, the, it's good to see that some of the runoff issues coming off of the hill where the Vincent driveway is would be addressed. I see that as a positive. I just wanted to end on a positive note, not be a negative note about everything. But my main concerns have to do, obviously, there's a lot of them, but the things that I brought up tonight and that I tried to mention here are really pertaining to whether, what was said and what was provided, provided enough information and detail to actually create this zoning district in a way that meets the real requirements of the zoning ordinances. Thanks.
Thank you, Wendy. Then you gotta speak. If, I'm not trying to speed you along, but Wendy's already addressed something. You don't have to duplicate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Ballo, fourteen seventy-seven Rock Hill Road, Rice Township, Glana. Once again, we have failed to address Fourth Street and Highway twenty and the state of Illinois. Now, in investigating this, the state of Illinois puts out publication. I'm, I'm rebutting their traffic. Their, their, that, it's their consensus for traffic. They brought the traffic up again. And so I'm trying to tell you that we have not been to visit Fourth Street and Highway twenty with the state of Illinois. The state of Illinois has criteria out that says that that intersection in our city should be advertised. Advertised to the community that it's unsafe, advertised to the school district that it's been unsafe. I have been to the school district and asked to get them, get that into their curriculum. Plus, taken into that intersection is the age. This, this is, this is the second largest county with sixty-five and older citizens, and that's the number two criteria in that intersection. The number one criteria in that intersection is nineteen and under. So that's why I went to the school to have that put in their criteria. So I dot is asking you to advertise about the safety of that intersection. And that is, is, is in their manual. I would like to point out one other thing is the safety aspect of that intersection. And the oath that the board has taken and the city council, and the oath that you have taken and that the city council takes has to address, address safety. And the state of Illinois is telling you, safety is not at that intersection that it already is. So, under your oath, you have to adjust safety. That's, that's your oath to adjust safety. And if you don't, then there are laws, you, you just can't skip it. There are laws that say that you have to address it. And that's what I'm asking you to address tonight, the safety of that intersection. It's just, I, I, I don't understand it. Nobody wants to talk about it, but it is physically there. It has a red flag hanging on it, and it's safe. Do not, do not put more traffic into it. Yet, we're gonna make it our core, we're gonna make it a new city of Glana corridor. You're gonna put into a Class A rated intersection that's warning you about safety. And the last thing is about the safety, is people who are coming to visit Glana are gonna make left-hand turns there, and they don't know anything. I dot is telling you to educate your citizens about that intersection. They're telling you that. That's, that's part of the plan. That's part of the Class A rated intersection that the city get involved and educate their community about that intersection. And nobody is doing that. Who is going to, who is going to tell all these visitors that are coming down that hill with truck, making a left-hand turn? Wait a minute. You're in a Class A dangerous intersection. These people won't know coming in and out of there. It's, I dot says, we should discuss it in our own community to, to make it safer for us, and especially at schools. And we do have school buses going through there. So I don't know why we continue not to address one of the, the big, in my opinion, the biggest factor of this whole intersection is its gateway, Highway twenty and Fourth Street. You just can't go there. I, I don't understand. I don't understand how anybody, I don't even know why I'm here. I, I'm being perfectly serious. How can a board turn their back on the state of Illinois that has federal regulations in, in Chapter thirty-four and is funded by the federal government at the state level to put that out? How can, how can you possibly turn your back on them? It's, it's, it's right there at start. It's over. You know, we have to look into this. That's it.
Thanks for your comments. Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to, oh, Jimmy, is there anything else you wanna add? Then, Jim? Is there any questions for him? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, then carry.
You wanna keep going? Maybe five minutes. We're gonna go.
I won't keep going.
That's not gonna take it. Okay.
So, all right, with that, and this is, just so everybody's clear on this, the motion pertain to either approving or denying the request to amend the plan of development to add an additional eighteen point two four acres on annexation into the corporate boundaries of the city of Glana. So that's what we're talking about. So I will entertain a motion on the requests.
There's been a lot of discussion tonight in opposition of this project, but this project's already been approved. Our job here tonight is like you just said, we are, have to determine whether or not we're gonna allow the annexation of these additional eighteen acres. The additional, in my opinion, additional eighteen acres is gonna enhance or improve some of the aspects of the original PUD. It's gonna make some of the concerns, maybe not perfect to what some of the objectors would like, but in my opinion, it'll make it better than what the original PUD was. So I'll make the motion that we give a favorable record, or approval recommendation to the city council to annex the eighteen point two four acres.
Just a point of caution, we're not annexing it. If your motion is to approve, what you're here tonight is to approve a positive recommendation for an amendment to the PUD to add the eighteen acres.
Thank you. Sorry if I, if I give the language incorrect. So yes, that is my.
I'll make the motion. All right. Is there a second?
I'll say.
A second. Now, with that, I'm gonna have Mr. Nackle through the criteria, and we can discuss each one of those. And, yeah, Joe, you go ahead.
So what we're gonna do is I'm gonna go through the seven criteria that you required to consider in order to make a decision on the amendment and the motion. And I'm gonna call each person out on each of the seven, or there's actually the eight issues to be considered, and ask each of you to give your opinion as to each of those issues. And discussing this and giving your opinion, you should take it to consider the amendment, also the effect on the entire PUD, because it's part of it. I mean, this is affecting the entire PUD. So I think it would be best that when you make your comments, that it's the eighteen acres plus the effect on the entire project, just for peace and safety. So starting out, the first issue or the first issue to consider is whether the existing text or zoning designation was in error at the time of adoption. And I'm gonna go through these in different order on each one. I'll start with, I'll call everybody by their last name. Lady?
Um, yeah, I do not believe it was in air the time of adoption.
Gates?
I agree. I don't believe it was in air. Obviously, as has been said several times here tonight, that these, these need to be in constant review, constant change, and there's no set rule on some of this stuff.
Monty Hahn? I concur with my two counterparts. I believe the eighteen point two four acres is, is correct and belongs in what the already approved.
Uh, Kansas?
I feel the same. The, it says the existing text or zoning designation was in there at the time of adoption. I don't believe it was.
And Rosa.
I, I do not believe that there was an error time of, when they adopted the zoning ordinance.
Second criteria, whether there's been a change of character in the area or throughout the city due to installation of public facilities, other zone changes, new growth trends, deterioration, development, transitions. Gates?
Yeah, I believe there has been some, obviously Blackjack Road hasn't changed a lot, but as has been stated many times, this wastewater treatment plant immediately to the west of the project. And then, you know, going up Highway twenty, we've got new development out there on the east side as well. You know, for instance, like the Irish Cottage, the, the project is going up the hotel across the road from there. So that, that area of Glana has also had some changes.
Monty?
I concur with Gates. I also believe that the character has changes. I understand the wastewater treatment. Is that less than fifty percent because it's new? So this will be a good positive for us. As you mentioned, there's been other changes since this has been done, so. I agree.
Yes.
I, I concur. There have been changes. When I think about the, what was it? The old folks home that was torn down.
Old farm? Old farm?
Old farm, which reduces the traffic. My wife and I used to go out to dinner there often, and now you just don't go to it because it's not there. So I, I believe that this, that's an example of a change.
Lady?
I concur with the colleagues and basically of all the same reasons.
I will. Yeah, I agree that there has been changes through public facilities and also the fact that they originally approved PUD has changed, you know, a little bit. So I concur.
The third criteria is whether the proposed rezoning is compatible with the surrounding area and defining characteristics of the proposed zoning districts. Or whether there may be adverse impacts on the capacity or safety of the portion of street network influenced by the rezoning, parking problems or environmental impacts that the new zone may generate, such as excessive stormwater runoff, water, air, or noise pollution, excessive nighttime lighting, or other nuisances. Monty?
I'm gonna take this one in pieces, Joe. I believe from a excessive stormwater runoff, based on what Ms. Bransky has stated, there is a potential to resolve some of that, so that's a positive. I also believe within our area, we have dual zones such as this after speaking with some folks. So I do not believe we're, and I have an issue here. I, I approve this.
Yes.
I feel the same. I, 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 I'm certain that there are times when there are storms or something that would impact the roadway. I think there is always gonna be a problem with traffic on that road. That you, you have to, I don't know how you change it, but it's not possible. But you accept it and try to work your way to the best level of safety as possible.
Lady? Yeah, I believe, agree also, but with the water runoff problem being resolved, that's the safety of Blackjack, I believe they'll have to look at, you know, reducing speeds further out. Those things are things that the city can deal with. Are there other ways? I can't really talk to you.
Gates?
Um, no, I, I, I agree as well. The water runoff area, the big improvement from the original PUD, and that's why I believe this eighteen acre addition is a big help. They've, they've spread the cottages out, they've reduced the number, the amount of pavement. They've addressed a lot of concerns. They've reduced the amount of trees that are gonna be cut. So it just, it brings in this eighteen acres that we're talking about is going to improve upon the original PUD that was approved at the city council.
Yeah, Rosa.
I agree that that extra eighteen acres does give them the ability to help with some of the current runoff that we have now. That's, has never been addressed for fifty years. Also, environmental impacts. I think they already stated the fact that they'd be going through all of that when they get their final concept of the plan. So I think that's taken care of. The rest, as far as noise pollution, I, I don't know how you even say that there's gonna be a problem, but you know, it's, it's the unknown. It's like saying that your property value is going down. You don't know that for sure. And I've sat here long enough on this board and listened to issues people had in their neighborhoods, and at the end of the day, there was no issue. And it's never come back to us that there was a problem. It's kinda like the old Walmart days when I was on the city council. And it was gonna be the end of Glana, Walmart come to Glana. Well, guess what? Walmart came. I thought I was crazy about it. Glana is still here, and everything's still running. So as far as I'm concerned, it, it all fits in there well.
The fourth criteria, whether the proposal is in conformance with and in furtherance of the implementation of the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, other adopted plans and policies, intents, and requirements of this code, and other city regulations and guidelines. Kansas?
Yes, I think all of that is true. I think that we have a statement here by the zoning administrator. Staff reviewed the proposed amendment and recommends approval as in compliance with the criteria in section one five four point nine two zero C one dash seven of the city Glana code ordinances. I rely on that, and I probably don't know the whole, I've got the book, but I don't read it every day. He does. And so I'm gonna rely on Jim, and if, if there's a problem, then we'll have to deal with that.
Lady? Totally agree with what was just stated. Nothing else to add?
Gates?
I also agree, because obviously, we're gonna go back through all the various phases. Each, each phase is gonna be approved each time. That's what we talked about the first time we went through this process. So if there's an issue about a final plan, that will be reviewed at each phase. I see a problem with the preliminary plan.
I, I can concur with what was just stated, and furthermore, I'll add that at each one of those phases, it will be a requirement that all permits, whether it be local, federal, state, so on and so forth, are noted. So we'll be informed at that point, so I agree.
And I believe it does fall the comprehensive plan, and we all can agree that the comprehensive plan is not written stone. You know, it's kind of like a guidebook to go along.
Yes.
Nothing in there stops development on the east side of Glana. And we've talked about that when I was on the city council. Sure, they'd like to see more to the west. But nothing prohibits development east side of Glana in the comprehensive plan. So I believe that. So, I believe that that four is is right.
Number five, whether adequate public facilities and services are available or will be made available concurrent with the projected impacts of development in the proposed zone. Lady.
Yeah, I believe that uh, we have the adequate facilities, um, and uh, will be uh, will be developed in the future. Uh, we have adequate now, but it will be probably uh, needed to be improved a little bit uh, with the addition.
Okay. Um, yeah, the obviously we've stated that the sewer treatment plant has excess capacity. There's been some concern about the uh, city being able to maintain the infrastructure, but I think uh, I was told by our city engineer that some of the infrastructure being replaced on highway twenty was put in in late eighteen hundreds and it's still now just being replaced, so I would assume we'll we won't have to worry about this new infrastructure for quite some time.
Montague.
On this one, Joe, I can only partially concur. I did concur with the water and sewer, however, I have not heard enough to convince me on the uh, services for fire, police and other city activities, that this will not be a problem, so I cannot concur on five.
Uh, Jenson.
Yeah, I I concur that uh, uh, with everything this one said, I have confidence in our law enforcement, our emergency services, et cetera, fire department. Uh, they will, uh, and have added what is needed, you know, over time, I I trust that that's going to continue.
Rosa.
Yeah, I I believe this, we do have adequate public facilities to add that, let put sewer and water lines in to the standard Glana requires. So that shouldn't be an issue and as far as police and fire and EMS, we've got several public hearings on this and I'm sure if there was a problem with the police, Chief Hable would have been up front or the fire chief or somebody from EMS to complain at the public hearing saying we do not have, we have the people or the equipment to do this. I haven't heard that come out of anybody yet, so to assume that it's not going to work, I I can't go by it, so I concur that it does fall under five.
Uh, under number six, whether there is an adequate supply of land available in the subject area and the surrounding community to accommodate the zoning and community needs. Gates.
Uh, yeah, I believe that that the land, obviously, um, eighteen additional acres was purchased by the developer to add to the original seventy eight uh, to try to address some of the concerns and um, there's even I'm sure more land up there available at the at the price that he he's so uh, I believe there's plenty of land up there.
Uh, Kansas.
I concur.
Uh, lady.
I concur.
Rosa.
I agree with Roger, I mean, I don't think there's an issue, the fact that they picked up the extra eighteen and a quarter acres. I mean, it does address some of the issues brought up by by these folks, not every issue, but it's brought up some of their issues and I think it's a
It's correct. Uh, number seven, whether there is a need in the community for the proposal or whether there will be benefits derived by the community or area by the proposed rezoning. Montague.
Yeah, you skipped me, Joe.
On the last one? Oh, I apologize, then let's go back to six, I apologize on that.
I actually had something to say on that.
Go back to number six, uh, Mr. Montague, I apologize.
So I I agree with this one, I actually see the eighteen point two four acres as being a gesture of goodwill to try to increase the overall green space protected and I believe there's also plenty of land up there.
Apologies and thank you for correcting me, I'm my own.
Don't worry, I always will.
Um, number seven, whether there is a need in the community for the proposal and whether there will be benefits derived by the community or area by the proposed rezoning. Montague.
You're not going to go first. So I, you know, I think you said it very well, I I took this one to heart and I've been thinking about this one a lot. When I was a kid, there was a store, Leo's Grocery Store, then there was Stairs, then there was the Dix, now the Pig, then it was Walmart, and guess what? I listened to my great grandparents, my grandparents, my parents, and even I complained about it. But as a businessman, this is called free enterprise. I believe this will benefit this community, I know it's hard for change. I very much understand that. The goodwill I'm seeing by asking us to add in these eighteen point two four acres, the potential jobs it could bring, it's something new. It will draw, you know, it will draw traction, that this is going to be good for the community. I've seen some of the other projects this developer has done and they are very tasteful, so.
Yes.
Yes, I concur with that, I think there is, we sometimes don't see indeed, like, um, I think one of the individuals said something about fifty percent capacity or something like that, well, that's right. And next week it might be sixty or next year it might be sixty. And then, uh, I think having that as a tax base is a plus, so I think there's always going to be a need to grow and this this is an opportunity.
Lady.
Yeah, I concur, I think this is going to be a um, real windfall for for Glana with not only the economic of uh, of creating jobs, uh, tax base increase, I guess, uh, great.
Uh, Gates.
Um, yeah, I agree, uh, you know, in regard to the uh, need for additional occupancy, the number fifty percent is is you can make, you can make numbers, uh, however you want. That number is based on the number of nights over three hundred and sixty-five days. We're a tourist town, we're a Thursday, Friday, Saturday. As an owner of a of an Airbnb here in Glana, I can assure you, my Airbnb has been rented every weekend from the first of March through the third weekend into summer, and so that tells me that there's a need, um. So am I, am I worried about it as a business owner? No, it's I've got a different, my my properties on Main Street are off just off the Main Street, I, these people are coming out here to enjoy nature. I think if we, if we're going to take business away from somebody, it's not going to be from the hotels or the Airbnbs or the bed and breakfast, I think we're going to maybe get some of the people that have been staying in the territory that want to be close to Glana, they they want to have dinner, they want to have a few drinks and they don't want to have to drive six miles to get back to their house. This is going to be their opportunity, so I I think this is a good thing.
I think the proposal method does uh, benefit the neighborhood because of that and the extra eighteen acres have picked up a better drive, it's away from where the originally wanted to put it in, a little safer. Um, as far as the benefits to the overall project, we don't know how much tax dollars it's going to bring, you can guess, uh, based on the property and what the land's worth, but I still, I think it's like everything else. Everything that's happened in this town in sixty-one years that I can talk about, has been a benefit to this town. And thank God we're still going and we'll be here sixty-one years at ground dead, so, or maybe even more. But we're always worried about what's going to happen in our backyard. And over thirteen years, nothing bad's come back in front of us that we've agreed on. Uh, there's still a few people in town don't speak to me, but we got over this, so that's all I got.
Okay, that, those are the seven required criteria, the last thing, you know, turn the back, we'll be gone, I think, and you guys will discuss it accordingly, but the last thing I think everybody needs to come on, comment on is taking into consideration the proposed project as a whole. Hearing what you heard on both sides of the equation tonight. Do you feel the projects, that the benefits of the project benefit the community greater than the negatives? Or do you feel that the negatives outweigh the positives? And I'll just go right around, Jenson.
Yeah, I think it's more positive than negative, it's just, there's going to be some time, but over time we'll we'll see the benefit of this.
Uh, Gates.
Uh, I I agree, I I grew up on a farm that was three miles from Apple Canyon Lake and as a small child, I remember my parents thinking that the earth was going to come to an end because they were building Apple Canyon Lake in our backyard. And uh, the earth didn't come to an end and their farm is still there intact and it is thriving, so um, you know, I know there's people that are upset that it's in their backyard. But this happens in a lot of places, uh, might, I know many people downstate Illinois are getting wind farms built in their backyard. But sometimes we have to go ahead and have a little progress to keep things viable and the tourism coming to Glana, they don't want the same experience year after year after year, they're looking for a new restaurant, a new place to go, a new place to stay, there's got to be something new and different or otherwise they're going to go sell it off.
Montague.
I concur, I believe the positives most definitely outweigh the negatives in this case, uh, there's a few factors. Uh, one, I'm very much a historic minded individual, which is what brought me back home here. The fact that the uh, developing company is willing to restore the uh, landmark building, the, you know, marine hospital, I think that's phenomenal and that the public can use that. The fact that they are willing to purchase extra space, have more green space, have vineyards, have prairies, help with runoff. And it will generate revenue for this city, as you stated Gates. Uh, in order to continue to grow as a tourist area, we have to continue to do new things. The same thing and not changing will not work, we need to prosper, so positives outweigh the negatives, thank you.
They, yeah, I believe the positives outweigh the negatives, so, um, I, this is the place to bring it up, but I do think that we do need to do a traffic count somewhere, I'm sure that'll be one of the phases, but uh, I think that needs to be addressed.
I will.
I think the overall benefit to the community is there, uh, I get the neighbors, they're concerned about stuff and that's the venue to bring it up here, uh, we're not always going to agree, but these guys said the same thing, if don't change and reduce, offer more things when they come here, just like that new museum they're going to build. You know, over off of the third street, that's going to draw more traffic, that's going to draw more people, but I don't hear anybody complaining about that. And it's a good thing, I'm glad they're going to do this museum, but those are the things you have to do to bring more people to Glana, because to be honest, it's the only thing we have, and somebody made mention of it that I made that comment. Well, I'd like to see some warehouse try to build outside of town uh, with fifty trucks a day coming in and out of Glana. They'd be down here filling this room up, shooting that down too. Because they wouldn't want that kind of business here. Tourism is what people want and when they've wanted it for fifty years, so no big businesses, John Deere isn't coming here and Ford Motor Company isn't coming to Glana, they tried years ago and couldn't get in. This is the only business we're going to get is tourists. And that's what brought a lot of people here that now live here and call this home. So, I think it's a benefit and I will vote yes.
Real quickly, just if I may, on the on the traffic on the corner there of the fourth and twenty, I I think the appropriate action to take is to work with the city council, the local police department, IDOT, and to come up with some solutions on how to either slow people down, maybe make no left turn off of fourth, I I I don't know what they are, I'm not a traffic engineer. But I think working with all the parties involved, there may be some solutions that that we as the zoning board have no control over, that's not our job. But I think there there could be if the public wants to try to talk to the city council, the police department, IDOT, and try to get everybody together and try to come up with some better solutions for that intersection and I think that'd be a good idea.
I agree.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve or send a positive finding to the city council in a sec. So I would ask that you call the roll, please. Yes.
Montague.
Okay.
Anderson.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Rosa.
Yes.
Okay, so that brings up a public comment.
See any Jim back, does he want to come back?
Oh, yeah.
Is Jim in here?
Yeah, I hope it comes, this, you know, what we've already discussed, there's something different.
Well, I'm assuming it's going to be on something different, but, but if he wants to speak on it.
Yeah, I didn't know that sometimes it's, and come on up front, Jim.
My comment is simple, again, you refuse to address a state warning. And you will not comment, you have refused, so therefore violated your duty under safety. And that's all I can say, now you, you admitted, now yes, that's it. And I don't, I, not even a word on that, you won't even speak about, I would, he he spoke about IDOT will tell you and they told me and they and they told that there is nothing to do if they can't do an intersection, for God's sakes, it would have been done. So, refuse to uh, abide by the state of Illinois, that's your decision. Thank you, Jim. Yep, thank you all.
You have a nice night. Okay, I entertain a motion, Joe.
I will second. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
In a second?
I'll second it.
I'm tired.
All those favors, say the five, we're saying eye.
Eye.
Those both.
Steve made the first and you may decide your direction.